I am on Thursday, April 14th. Present with me today is to my right Senator Frank Uggan and to my left is Senator Rory Respechel. Thank you gentlemen for joining us. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive testimony on four bills. The first bill would be Bill 290-33 which has to do with granting administrative jurisdiction to the office of the mayor of Inarahan on tract 3620 in Inarahan. Bill 287-33 introduced by Senator Rory J. Respechel, an act to establish the Southern River Erosion Council. Bill number 284 introduced by Senator Rory Respechel, an act to amend section 3219 which clarifies the notice requirements for the sale of used tires. And Bill 276-33 introduced by Senators Tina Barnes and Judy Wampat. And so that will be the order that we would hear the bills, but no worries, we will get through the bills way before lunchtime and we'll get you back out to where you need to go. Also joining us is Senator Tony Ada. So we'll go ahead, Peter is the PowerPoint on. Notice of this public hearing was provided to senators, stakeholders, and the local media and published in the Guam Daily Post on April 7th and on April 11th which meets then the requirements of the open government law. This public hearing is also being broadcast on local television, so for those of you who will be presenting testimony, I ask that you please make sure you speak into the mic so that it can be recorded clearly and the people who are listening on television can also hear you. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 5:00 PM on Friday, April 15th. Please address your testimony to Senator Thomas Siata, Chairperson Committee on Transportation, Infrastructure, Lands, Border Protection, Veterans Affairs, and Procurement. And can be dropped off to the mailboxes here at the legislature or emailed to my office, office@senatorada.org. So we'll start the public hearing. Also want to welcome Speaker Judy Wampat for joining us this morning. So we'll start off with the first bill, Bill 290-33 which is an act to place the tract 3620 in the municipality of Inarahan under the administrative jurisdiction of the office of the mayor of Inarahan and the Inarahan Municipal Planning Council. And so the area that we're talking about here, and just to kind of give an orientation as to what we're talking about, is actually the area that is bounded by the red, oops, bounded by the red, that's within the red area, and that's the tract of land that we're talking about this morning. The area there that's in yellow is also government land which we're looking to add on to place under the administrative control of the mayor. Just to give an further orientation, within that tract of land that I just showed you, right now is located in there, there's a senior citizen center, there's the Guam Fire Station, and also right here in the corner is a post office mailbox stand. An aerial view of the area. Looks like I'm, Peter? Okay, so this is an aerial view of the area, and this here is the senior citizen center. This here is the fire department. This here is that post office box. Down here is Route 4 coming from Malolu down into the village of Inarahan. So the areas that we're looking at transferring administrative control to the mayor includes all these areas here and also this. So with that introduction, I'm going to go ahead and call up those who have signed up to provide written testimony, and I have Mayor Doris Luhon, Mr. Don Weekly, David Chargloff, and Michael Borha. So I would first like to start with a testimony from the Director of Land Management, and then I'll turn it over to the mayor of Inarahan.
Good morning, Madam Speaker, Mr. Chairman, Senators. I'm Mike Borha, the Director of the Department of Land Management. On the bill number 290-33, the department has reviewed this bill and in our written testimony, I have a recommended change, and basically it was to add that US Postal Service lot that was identified on the tract of land that was on here, I don't think that was listed in the bill. The intent of the bill 290 is similar to Bill 227 which this department commented on in its January 21st testimony. The significant difference with Bill 290 is the inclusion of an unfunded mandate in section 3 of the bill onto the Department of Land Management. Instead of the department, instead the department recommends the following, that the office of the mayor of Inarahan and the Inarahan Municipal Planning Council fund the necessary consolidation and parceling of the lots of 3620 being administratively transferred to it from the Trumora Land Trust Commission. Funding may be sourced from the host community benefits fund for the municipality of Inarahan as authorized in Title 10 of the Guam Code Annotated, Chapter 51. Or the consolidation and parceling of the lots in tract 3620 would be required of and performed by the contractor who will construct the multipurpose sports facility for the office of the mayor of Inarahan and the Inarahan Municipal Planning Council. And that's the testimony we have for today.
Okay, so first of all, land management has no objections to the turning over for administrative control?
Nor does the Trumora Land Trust. We had already discussed that in the previous bill, and it's to be used by the mayors, and the Trumora Land Trust Act permits those kinds of activities for the lands to be used for the communities and for the mayor specifically.
And so, just so that we clarify also for the record, this bill was introduced because the previous bill actually made reference to an incorrect track number.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Mayor?
Good morning, Madam Speaker, Wampat, Honorable Chair Senator Tom Ada, Senators Uggan, Respechel, and Tony Ada. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to provide my testimony this morning in favor of Bill 290-33 COR. We respectfully request that section 1 of Bill 290-33 specifically lines 5 and 6 which states "multipurpose sports facility" be amended to read "community public service", "community public facilities". Additionally, we respectfully request that section 2 of Bill 290-33 be removed in its entirety.
Okay.
Additionally, we respectfully request that Bill 290-33 be amended to include track number 381-1 and all adjacent lots that are located on tract 3620 be included under this bill.
Okay, and if you read in section 1, lot 381-2, or...
381-1. To include 381-1.
Yeah, I guess we're having a change of track numbers versus lot numbers, but those are details that we'll get straightened out, and as long as we have your written testimony, we'll take a close look at that and work out those details.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
That it?
That it.
All right. Mr. Weekly?
I'm just here to support the mayor.
Okay.
But it sounds like we got things, you know, a little history on this, about three years ago, we, the council, under the direction of the mayor, submitted a request to Gura for a funding for gymnasium under CDBG funds, and not knowing at that time that it was under the control of the Trumora Land Trust, we always thought it was under the control of the mayor, and Gura came back and said that, and by the way, the contract with, or the agreement with Trumora Land Trust expires in about six years, six or seven years. So they didn't want to touch it unless we could get permanent control of the property. So they have given us indication that they will assist with funding of it, of the gymnasium and other sports facilities. And in addition to that, the mayor's concept here is to make this area kind of the government center of Inarahan, you know, because it's up above, you know, dangers, any danger tidal waves and things like that, you know. So, you know, and we're one of two villages on the island that does not have, there are our own mayor's office. So someday, we hope that, we always felt like the government should provide mayor's offices to the mayors, so maybe you folks can take a look at that. Right now, we're paying about $2,600 a month to the church for leasing the mayor's office where we're at now in Malolu, and so if something could be worked out where that could be moved into like some type of a funding situation for a permanent mayor's office. So that's something we'd like you to take a look at, if you could, please, you know. But we like that area there because that's, you know, public health is right there, the center, and fire department's right there, the senior citizen center's right there, so it's just an ideal location for everything, you know. So we respectfully request your approval of it, of our needs.
Okay, great. Thank you. Sir?
Hi, good morning. My name is David Chargloff, a resident of Inarahan. Honorable Chairman and Senators, thank you for the opportunity. I'm here in support of Bill 290-33 which ultimately gives jurisdiction to our mayor's office and municipal planning council. I just have two questions. The first question is, the bill identifies the use of the land specifically for a multipurpose center, and so my question is that if in fact we do get jurisdiction, is it restricted to just that? And so it's almost in line with our current mayor's thoughts of consolidating and/or including other government buildings, and so that's my first question, is it going to be restricted to just a multipurpose center? And then secondly, it does state, the bill states that in the event that we don't use the land, it goes back to the Trumora Land Trust? So what, is there a timeline or a deadline in terms of how, you know, when we have to use that land? Those are my two questions.
Those are very good questions. I'm going to let the co-sponsor of the bill answer those questions. You're the co-sponsor? Oh, shit. I had so many bills, I forgot which was which. Actually, we have the, I think the mayor has brought up earlier in her testimony that the property is being transferred for the purpose of the multi-sports facilities, but the recommendations to make is to make it a broader term so that we're not limited to that. The question about if it is not used, if it is used for something else other than what was being envisioned as it go back to Trumora Land Trust, that is, that's a very good question, and I guess we'll have to go back and take a look at that.
Well, also, we, the intent is to use it for the multipurpose center, but then are we restricted to use it for just that specifically, or can we add on to?
Well, yes.
Senator, earlier I stated that section 2 of this bill be removed in its entirety, which means we don't have any limitation as far as owning the property once it's transferred under the jurisdiction of the mayor's office.
And I heard what you said.
Yes, sir.
And we'll look at that.
Thank you.
Okay. Does that answer your questions?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So does anybody have any questions off the panel?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And it goes back to the question, of course, of deleting community public facilities, I mean, multipurpose sports facilities to community public facilities, and then I'm wondering, is that, I'm wondering if it's just semantics here, because when you say multipurpose, you know, sports facilities and then public facilities, I mean, what specifically do you envision now and in the future, so we get an idea as to what it is that you're planning to use the land for?
Madam Speaker, we're going to change the construct, the word "multipurpose sports facility" to "community public facilities", which includes educational, recreational, and cultural purposes. Adult learning center, vocational technical training, and anything, you know, that is possible for our community to engage in that building so that it's a general purpose facility, you know, for whatever comes up, because eventually, you know, Inarahan is going to grow. You know, we have residents that have lots up in Adia and also the Trumora Land Trust, and it's going to grow, and we're going to be needing this type of facility.
But Don also mentioned that he would like that eventually maybe even have the mayor's office there, so...
Yes, ma'am.
So, okay, so that would also include then the mayor's office. Okay, thank you.
I guess you're kind of looking at a larger version of what you have in the village right now, where you have the basketball court back there, you have that old house that's been renovated which becomes the community meeting center, I guess you have a small computer room back there for the younger folks to come into. I mean, it's a very small, multipurpose facility. You really need to start thinking about the growth in the village, and so that's what you're looking at. Okay, fine. All right. If there's no other questions, then we'll consider Bill 290-33 as having been duly heard. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next bill that's up for discussion is Bill 287-33 introduced by Senator Rory J. Respechel and Mary C. Torres. I'm going to go ahead and ask the sponsor to introduce the bill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for promptly hearing this bill. This legislation originated with a site visit to the Talafufa and Ougam rivers organized by my office and the Southern Soil and Water Conservation District Board a few months ago. What we found was a great erosion problem along the banks of these two rivers. This ongoing erosion has caused serious environmental problems as well as threats to navigation along the rivers, their water quality, and nearby Trumora heritage sites. Furthermore, Mr. Chairman and colleagues, this erosion problem has endangered the jobs of people working in farms and tourism-related activities along these two rivers. In the weeks following the site visit, my environment committee held two roundtable discussions involving all those who have a stake in the future of these two rivers and adjoining properties. Commentators included representatives from federal and local government agencies, southern landowners, academics, private sector enterprises, and other stakeholders. Three central conclusions emerged from these discussions. First, that there are available solutions to mitigate the erosion along the Talafufa and Ougam rivers centered mostly around reforestation and treatment of silt deposits in the Bolanos Conservation Area in Yumatek. Second, that there were other rivers in southern Guam such as Enamo River and Santarita with serious erosion issues that are posing not only environmental problems but also threats to private residences and infrastructure. And third, finally, it was the consensus of these roundtable discussions that to fully address these erosion issues would require a sustained multi-year strategy that would extend beyond the term of this current legislature and this current administration. Bill number 287-33 would establish the institutional framework for this sustained multi-year effort. The measure first establishes the Southern River Erosion Council to develop strategies and recommendations to mitigate the erosion along the Talafufa, Ougam, Enamo rivers, and other rivers in southern Guam. In need of this mitigation effort, this council will be made up of stakeholders including the relevant government agencies, the southern mayors, and southern landowners. The recommendations of this council would then go to the Southern Master Plan Task Force which has already been established by statute with a $200,000 appropriation. Using this input from the council, the Southern Master Plan Task Force would prepare specific master plans to implement the recommended strategy for each river identified in the Southern River Erosion Council with erosion concerns requiring mitigation. This would establish the institutional foundation for effective action to mitigate erosion concerns along the rivers of southern Guam. And so I also, Mr. Chairman, thanks Senator Mary Torres for co-sponsoring this bill with me, and I ask for the support of this committee for this bill and the passage of this legislation will take a very important step to provide the sustained long-term effort that will be required to solve the erosion problems in these southern jurisdictions with similar erosion issues. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Signing up to provide oral testimony is Dr. Galabi, Mr. Matt Sablon from Department of Agriculture, and Mr. Thomas Kloppenberg. Okay, gentlemen, step forward. Also signing up in support of the bill is Mayor Doris Luhon from Inarahan in favor, and Mr. Manny Duñez from the Guam Fisherman's Co-op Association also in favor of the bill, but you didn't want to speak. No? Okay, your choice. Okay, so we'll start with, I saw Mr. Sablon here earlier. Okay, probably left. So we'll go ahead and we'll start with Dr. Galabi.
Thanks, Senator. Madam Speaker, Chair, and respective Senators. Senator Respechel and also, I think, Senator Ada, you have invited me to attend this public forum, a public hearing about the bill, the aforementioned bill, which is about the soil erosion in Ougam River and some other areas in the south of Guam. And I'm very glad that you have invited me, and I gladly accepted the invitation. Last time, when you had the hearing, I couldn't attend because I had other commitments, but this time I tried to make it. Regarding the soil erosion in Ougam River, I have visited the site and similar sites many times because part of my teaching as a soil scientist, I usually take my students to these sites. I teach a upper-level course, graduate course, which is called Environmental Soil Sciences. And as part of that course, I take students around the island and show them where the soil degradations are happening, where the soil erosion is happening and sedimentation happening, which of course eventually will pollute the waters nearby and eventually the ocean and coral reef. Yesterday during the sustainability conference, which I attended and will be attending again after this meeting, there was a lot of talk about the pollution in these areas, and there was a lot of talk about the importance of coral reef with respect to the Guam well bank, economic law, economical and social. And it was mentioned many times, several speakers talked about sedimentation and siltation being a major problem, especially in the south of Guam. And I have been working on this issue for the last 15 years, ever since I came to Guam. The very first thing I noticed was the soil erosion is a major problem, and as a result, water quality, of course, has been a major problem, and if you have, at least I remember many times when there was a typhoon or big storm, they shut down the water at the Ougam River in the south mostly because sedimentation blocks or clocks the pumps and they have to shut down the water. And again, as a result of the sedimentation. So the point is that the sedimentation is a major problem, and I'm glad that Senator Respechel has actually brought this as a bill, and I hope that it can be passed and be enforced, and that's the major thing. Now, regarding the sedimentation, we know that is happening, but there are causes for that, there are reasons for sedimentation, and there are many of them. Definitely, fire is one reason for soil erosion. There's a lot of fire that happens in south of Guam, and I don't want to go into the detail why they're happening, but most of the time they are man-made fire or man-caused fire. And of course, when you have a fire, you remove all the vegetation, and before the next vegetation can take place, the soil remains exposed to sun and rain and eventually cause some soil erosion. That's one cause of it. The other cause of the soil erosion in the south part of the Guam is a lot of construction sites which are not protected or not managed properly. And there was a, there are many examples, but one example that they really, the managers or constructors were cautious enough to do something about it was the Pago Bay area. When they cut all those forest vegetation in the Pago Bay area, there was immediately a lot of soil erosion and a lot of sedimentation, and people quite rightly protested, and some agencies, of course, protested, and then the managers or constructors decided to do something about it, and they started talking about, around, and somebody had told them that you need to go to the University of Guam and ask for help. And they went to the University of Guam, and then at the university, I think, president office, they said, "We have a person with an accent, he may help." And so they came to me, and I went there and looked at it, and I developed a technique to prevent sedimentation there using a special grass called vetiver grass. I have a presentation, power from presentation, and brought it with me, but I was told that I had to bring it earlier so it can be set up. And so for that, I apologize, which I didn't know, but in my presentation, I showed that how that site, the Pago Bay, was completely mitigated, so even not a single sediment can go to the ocean from the site. During the construction site, that was a major issue, and this technique worked very well. But unfortunately, in many other places, they have not seek help, and the soil erosion is still a major problem. So like I said, there are several causes, fire is one of them, construction sites are one of them, a lot of times they are not managed properly and they are not protected. And then farming, some farmers unfortunately also do the same thing, they mismanage the farm, they just till the farm up and down rather than parallel to the slope, and they also cause a lot of soil erosion in certain areas, which I have been contacting them, or they come to me sometime through the extension, and I advise some of them, and some have taken steps to protect that. But the major cause of the soil erosion in south of Guam, which I have been talking a lot, and I have been writing articles in the newspaper, PDN newspaper, you can check some of my articles, and my presentations, conferences, and classrooms, is the off-roading. And there is a lot of off-roading around different parts of Guam, but especially in the south. And very recently, I took some of my students, in fact, they are present here, to some of these sites to actually show them, which I do with most of my classes, that how off-roading is really damaging to the land. They basically go with this very heavy-duty duty... They basically go with this very heavy-duty vehicles with the big tires, and they tear up the land, and then that soil gets removed by the water immediately after the next rain, and then gets into the road and to the rivers and eventually to the ocean. And again, like I said, I took my students there, and they took pictures, and we had it in my presentation today. But, and you can chase the sediment or silt or soil that has been removed from those site into the road and eventually into the Long Feed River near the Leopold Palace. That's just an example. And then it merks the water in the river and eventually the Pago Bay. So Pago Bay is still is one of those major, or one of those places that you see a lot of sedimentation and murky water after the rain, but is not coming from the construction side, that development side anymore. It's coming from the off-roading. And in Ougam River also, I have traveled in that area a couple of times. In fact, we had, one of our graduate student did a study in that area, and there is also off-roading near that area also. And there's a lot of bad land, and all this can be mitigated. We have developed techniques that can mitigate these bad lands and convert them to good land. And I had a project in Rota for about three years and finished that project last year. They have similar problem, and I was able to, what we call it, convert bad land to good land. And we actually did that and proved that in Rota, and the project is continuing with some other people right now because my grant was over at that time. So the point is that there is a lot of soil erosion in Guam, and there are ways to mitigate them. In fact, but again, unfortunately, there is not have been much talk about mitigation. Everybody just, they, at the University of Guam, there are some researchers that they have been doing a lot of watershed studies, but all they do, they develop models. But I think we need to go from the, trying to develop models and go back to the field and be experimental and do actual mitigation technique rather than just knowing what's going on, and we know that already. So for that reason, again, I think the off-roading would be one of the major problem with the sedimentation, and that could be mitigated again. And one way that can be mitigated, I have seen it in places like Japan, they have a lot of places that people do off-roading as a hobby. But those places are being excluded from everywhere else, so they are protected. In other words, those places are official places that people who want to do off-roading, they go there, but they do not contaminate the environment surrounding that area. The area which is being used for off-roading is completely excluded from everywhere. It's protected either with special vegetation or there are some other techniques or other tools to use for protecting those area. So again, in my opinion, if there is going to be protection for the natural resources of Guam, there should be a step taken or maybe laws established and enforced regarding the off-roading and of course also fire burning. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Galabi. Go ahead.
Good morning, Speaker and Senators. Thank you for the opportunity to come here and support a bill 28733. We believe that this comprehensive approach to address the erosion issues related to the river in southern Guam will ultimately lead to a short-term and a long-term solution problem that has negatively affected the environment, and many of us that call the southern end of the island our home. As a property owner that has land on the Ougam River at its western boundaries and the Talafofa River on the northern boundaries, we have firsthand experience in witnessing the damage caused by heavy rains that has eroded almost a quarter acre of our property away in just the last two years. We want to thank Senator Respecho and Senator Torres for the leadership in introducing this bill, for all the legislators and members of administration who took the time to do a site visit with us a few months ago to bring this issue into the forefront. We'd also want to thank the leadership of Mrs. Aggie Mendiola from the Southern Water Conservation District members for continuing their efforts to address this problem with us down south. As landowners, we are willing to assist in whatever capacity we can, you guys deem necessary, to help us preserve this area, which is now being adversely affected by the erosion in the south. We've had a river tour going on 28 years now, and in the last three years, all of a sudden, we can't go up the Ougam River anymore, which was a real highlight because we used to go up the Talafofa River about a mile, and then we cut up into the Ougam, and we go up the Ougam about a quarter mile to a very beautiful spot. It was so beautiful. It was big, it had bamboos all hanging on every places, it had coconut trees. The boat would go there, and the bubbles would come up in the middle of the river, and everybody would be amazed, the tourists or even the locos would be, and we'd explain how it's a ground spring that's feeding into the Ougam, which the Ougam is ground, a spring-fed river besides the runoff from rain and so forth. That river is completely filled in. It used to be 20, 25 feet deep. It's eight inches to a foot and a half today. It has completely filled in, filled in to the point that when water wants to come down the river, it has to go over all the dirt that's filled in the river, hence it's hitting the banks, and that's what's causing a lot of the erosion. So much settlement has come down into the Ougam River and has gone through the Talafofa River and has gone out the bridge, right into the bay now. You could go down there, stand right at the edge surf side where they put all the rocks to prevent the erosion, and look and see about 500 dump trucks of dirt that's sitting out there that wasn't there a couple of years ago. It's, it's also causing the Talafofa to get shallow now, too. The problem, the Talafofa River, once you pass Ougam and you go up there, it doesn't seem like it changed that much. It's from the Ougam River where all this settlement is coming. So something took place up the Ougam River X amount of years ago, and the effect is still, it's still washing down its settlement. Every time there's a heavy rain, it's a little shallower, which hence, when big things do break off, like big clumps of bamboo now, the water's so shallow, I mean, it breaks it off in the heavy rain, but it pushes it so far and it gets stuck there. And, well, we lost the Ougam River. I'm here telling you guys, it was so beautiful, and something happened up the Ougam that caused all this settlement to come down. Thank you, Senators.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kloppenberg. Mr. Sablon?
Buenos dias, Madam Speaker, Senator Ogden, Senator Ada, Senator Respecho, Senator Ada, and Senator Blas. I thank you for providing me this opportunity this morning to provide in support of bill 287-33 COR. Yes, again, my name is Matthew Sablon, Director of Department of Agriculture. And with this bill, it actually establishes the act to the Southern River Erosion Council, which is much needed. It's time we come up with an organization that actually can develop master plans. And it also mandates the creation of various master plans. Discontinuing erosion not only affects the rivers in southern Guam, but if you look at the whole town, the farming community, you know, where you have farmers that actually till the soil, which is now with sediments now actually is not very much capable of propagation. And a lot of these farmers, the farming community, they use it for source of sustainability and source of income. So that's one aspect and impact of this erosion, not just the rivers, and of course, to include the marine life, but also the infrastructure. When you have the roadway infrastructure, the sediments that actually come down, clog, clog the drainage, and I don't know if public works this year, but that also affects, that's an impact of the erosion. The effect here of the ridge to, the ridge to reef impact, what happens, starts on the top, goes down to your farmers, to your residents, to your infrastructure, and then to your marine. So it is really crucial that we have, we develop this council. Somebody has, you know, an organization has to be in place. We did have the site visit, then we had the roundtable here. A lot of evidence were presented, even with my forestry division, Mr. Joe Moffness, and the various causes of the erosion. And the gentleman before me mentioned it a lot in detail. Yes, it is very important that we establish a council and mandate master plans. We, we need, somebody has to take the lead. We can have so many, so much meetings, but we need to take action. In closing, I just want to thank you for introducing this bill. I fully support it, and I hope it, it's in favor of being passed. Thank you, Mrs. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Sablon. That exhausts the list of those who have signed up to provide testimony. Any questions from this panel, Senator Respecho?
Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you dismiss the panel, I just want to say thank you for your participation and recognize you for all your work over the years. You know, many people seem to think that, oh, a bill to create another commission, another council, more government. But in meeting with these individuals, we discovered what we already knew, that a lot of work has been done over the years in the case of agriculture with plant reforestation initiatives, and in the case of the Inarahan community through the leadership of, the strong leadership of Mayor Doris Luhon, many things has been done. And so when I asked them, Mr. Chairman, what, what do we need to do, and I suggested, do you want to institutionalize the ongoing efforts and the responding, the resounding response was yes, that if we have a statute that brings all the players to the table, and so that we have one holistic approach to solving this issue. And then now Mayor Del Averas brought up the Enamo River, and so instead of just focusing on, on the southern watershed in those particular two areas, we want to talk about the entire southern community. And so this bill has evolved. It's evolved, so much so that we also recognize the ongoing efforts to add all of the southern mayors to the development of the southern master plan. So what this bill will do, Mr. Chairman, with your support, and if it passes with the support of our colleagues and Governor signs it, it would make whatever recommendation this council is able to put together, it would automatically fold it into the southern development master plan, which is a critical component of that master plan to begin with. And so the efforts at their level would not have to be recommunicated to the southern master plan council, that it would automatically be adopted, and this bill would provide that kind of mechanism. So we kind of make up for the lost time in, in trying to resolve the very serious issue facing the entire southern community and the entire people of Guam for that matter, because as I pointed out in my testimony, if you don't protect the environment, you don't protect our economy, you don't protect the jobs, because the tourism will not be able to enjoy this very special place. I want to recognize Mr. Dave Tainico also for his leadership in this area. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else? Senator?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and I just want to thank the sponsor of this legislation for initiating this entire process and at least bringing it to a focus in terms of being able to identify the issue publicly through this venue and then being able to try to address it. But one of the questions I have, and I know that the Department of Agriculture has been doing a fantastic job along Cross Island Road to try to prevent the erosion of some of our greenery there as well as the soil, but between Dr. Galabi and Mr. Sablon, is there anything that can be done at least immediately in terms of presenting possibilities so that either the legislature or our government entities can begin implementing them? Because you have a successful reforestation, erosion prevention program that already has proven very successful. So I'm asking whether in fact there's something that can be done immediately to address some of the major erosion problems or situations out there in conjunction with the southern development master plan being formulated, in conjunction with this council coming together and being able to try to address this? Because you and I know that time is of the essence. It's, we wait another month, we wait another three months, we wait another four months before a master plan is actually formulated, then that four months that could be bypassed, rather than at least trying to provide some resources so that you can start working on implementing perhaps even a, an immediate approach. Yes? Dr. Galabi? Can you please use the mic?
Before he does, I want to lay the groundwork for probably what he's going to say. I want to thank Senator Ogden for making that point, because I said this recognize ongoing efforts and particularly the effort of new doctor Austin Shelton, where his entire doctoral project was on the containment of silt, preventing it from going into the rivers. And through his project and the community partnership, I believe directly he was able to contain like 1,700 tons of silt from going into the riverbanks.
That's great.
Yeah, actually, actually, Dr. Austin, I helped him with his project. Initially, when he left here, he was our students, and then he left, went to Hawaii, but every time he came back, and the very first step that he took, we went around that area, and he basically used some of my advice to come up with the techniques to prevent soil erosion. And in fact, he presented his research yesterday during the conference. However, the technique that he has used, although very effective, but very temporary, because he's using this already made, like a burlap bag, long burlap bag that you put on the area and you stop the sedimentation, trap the sediment, and then also they, those material can grow because they have seeds in them and develop a vegetation, which is a very good technique, has been used in many places, and I have seen them in other countries. And however, they're temporary. And, but if the native vegetation also is included with that, such as the acacia trees that the Department of Agriculture has been very successful on that in many areas like in Cross Island Road, they had developed a lot of acacia plantation. However, with the acacia, unfortunately, is very susceptible to fire. And unfortunately, there's a lot of fire, and those trees burn very quickly. And I had a project in Cross Island Road, and it still some of my equipment there, and we studied that. We studied, basically, we studied different, different conditions where the soil erosion occurs, and we also developed techniques how to prevent it. Now, among the techniques that we developed so far, and it's been the most effective and is permanent, is planting a grass called vetiver grass. This grass is very sturdy and has a root system that goes down up to 17 feet and expands for eight to seven, seven to eight feet, and it's only one branch, one bunch of a grass that has that much root, and roots are very, very fine, and they hold on to the soil. So they can stabilize the slope if you have very, you know, steep slope, and also they can prevent the sedimentation. Again, like I said, we use that in the Pago Bay area and prevent or trap the sediment all the way to the last piece. So, and it stays forever and hardly ever needs maintenance, and that's what I have suggested many times, to be used for areas that can be, that they are very susceptible to soil erosion. And we use that in Rota, and now Rota people are pretty happy because a lot of bad lands that they had and nothing would grow there, vetiver grow, vetiver grass grew, and now in areas that vetiver grass is like a bad land, if you have a And now, in areas that vetiver grass is, like a badland, if you have a piece of badland, we planted the vetiver grass around it, and as a result of the, preventing the sediment going all over the area that is, between this exclusion, it started developing new vegetation by itself, because it's not being eroded away anymore. So the soil stays in place, and the new vegetation, the native vegetation is coming up. So again, like I said, there has been a lot of work that has been done with the Department of Forestry. I remember when I came here, we, I worked with Mr. David DiMaggio, who passed away, and we did a lot of that work. And, but unfortunately, some of those tree plantations are very susceptible to fire. So I think a combination of all these techniques could be applied, not only one, just the trees, or just the vetiver grass, or just those burlap bags are not good enough. They should be a combination of them, and the, dealing with the sedimentation should be holistic, should be, is a, is a complex problem, and cannot be solved only looking at it from one aspect or other, should be, look at it from all aspects.
Great. And I, I think that's where the council comes in, to bring all those possible techniques together. Okay. Any other questions?
Just one, one follow-up, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And Dr. Galabi, what's the name of the grass again?
Vetiver grass. V E T I V E R.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
And one final suggestion, if I can ask-
And I have, I can provide you with information about that.
Thank you. If I can ask-
And we have, I'm sorry, and we have a lot of it in our station in Iha. We have a lot of it already planted, because we have a solar ocean there, a lot of badland, and one way to stop it so that we can do other projects, we planted vetiver grass.
Thank you, Doc. And just, just one final comment I want to make with regards to the legislation, and Senator Spieso, thank you for including Zona.
Sure.
Mayor is a participant of this discussion, but if we can also add the Menengan River, because I know you, you provided a general clause about any other rivers, but I think the, the, Dr. Galabi, as well as the Director of Agriculture is very familiar with the major erosion problem that the Menengan River right now is incurring, especially right alongside the bridge, which is in Menengan, because I mean, it's already abutting the, the, the structure and, and the frame itself. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other senators have questions? None? Okay. So we'll consider then Bill 287-33, as having been duly heard. Thank you very much, Senator.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to the next bill, which is Bill 284-33, and I'll ask the sponsor to introduce it, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This bill concerns a recent change in law related to the sale of used tires. Public Lot 32-214 revised the maximum age for used tires for sale, setting it at ten years. However, the public notice requirement in the section of that law did not reflect that change as well. So in order to, to make the new law consistent, I offer Bill 284-33 for your consideration so that this corrected, this matter corrected by Bill Number 284-33 will provide for the technical change necessary. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. And signing up to provide oral testimony is Mr. Glenn Siniklas. You're not going to be making any? Okay, fine. Well, there being no testimony, that's it? Consider Bill 284-33 as having been duly heard. Now we'll go on to Bill 276-33, introduced by Senator Tina Munia Barnes and Speaker Judy Wampat. But before we do that, I want to go ahead and just kind of orient the senators as to what we're talking about here. Senator, while we're waiting for this speaker, if you want, you can go ahead and make your opening remarks on the bill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The, I have here a written statement by the primary author, Senator Munia Barnes, and if I, you know, be allowed to, to read her statement, I appreciate it.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much. Half a day in Buenos Aires. Good morning, everyone. Now, remember, this is from Senator Munia Barnes. I thank all of you for being here this morning to support Bill 276-33 and measure that I, along with the Cushing family, and I'm sure many animal lovers, students, teachers, parents, visitors, hope will keep the doors of the Cushing Zoo open for many more decades. In working with Mrs. Cushing, I can see why they've called Guam home for so long. They understand the value of family, and they've put their heart and soul into giving back to our families. It was an honor and a privilege to work with her on the measure, and I only wish that I could be there in person to show my support for the Cushing Zoo and all of the Cushing family. It's been a long time coming since I began working with Mrs. Cushing on this effort. We've had many meetings, communications, and correspondences during this time, and I'm truly grateful to Chairman Ada for helping us get Bill 276-33 one step closer to the session floor with this public hearing. He's gone above and beyond to make accommodations for this hearing. On behalf of the Cushing family, Mrs. Massey, Mr. Chairman, the Cushing family has done more than live, work, and raise a family in Guam. They've called Guam home for decades, and they've been great supporters of our community over the years, more than just giving us the up-close experience of the zoos, animals, and wildlife, or even the lessons about the importance of conservation, perseverance, and sustainability. The Cushing Zoo is a place of memories. For those of us parents and grandparents, know that we may not think of it, think of it often, but the Cushing Zoo is the designation of one of the first field trip permission slips were signed for kids. How many moms and dads get on school buses every year to help teachers get hundreds of kids safely through, through the park? How many pictures of students were taken there? How many visitors take their children there to see the indigenous finihi? And the question that brings us here today is how many more students will get to have the Cushing Zoo experience? Yet despite the memories created by so many at the Cushing Zoo, at our emotional, or our emotional attachment to them, this measure serves a clear policy goal as well. In the Cushing Zoo, nearly twenty years in operation, they have successfully bred the Marianas fruit bat, protected nearly twenty-seven separate flora and fauna, and exhibited eighteen other species that brought awareness and appreciation to animals of all kinds to the public. The Cushing Zoo has become an invaluable tool for conservation efforts, housing the many indigenous plants and animals which would otherwise be lost to us. Without the Cushing Zoo's unique permitting regime, zoning qualifications, and expertise, we could, we would lose more than a zoo. We would lose a part of ourselves. The zoo is perfectly situated in the heart of the Tumon tourist district. Walk through the park, and you find yourself on one of the most beautiful beaches in the world. Instead of fighting to keep its door open, maybe we can find ways to help the Cushing Zoo evolve and take a step forward with new attractions or even research capabilities. I believe the possibilities remain limitless, and I hope that we're able to drum up even more support so we can do more than keep the doors of the Cushing Zoo open. I thank you all once again for showing your support for the Cushing Zoo and your testimony on behalf of Bill 276-33. Mrs. Massey, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. So that we all know the area that we're talking about. This is down in Tumon. Right here is the Matapang Beach. Back in here are where the canoes are, are parked. Over here is the Holiday Inn Resort. Back here are two condominiums, and up here in the front is the fenced-off private property. The Cushing Zoo is actually, this is the private property that belongs to the Cushings. And the property in question that we're looking at is this area, this strip here, which consists of about a thousand square meters, almost, almost a quarter of an acre. On the map, this is what it looks like. So we have Matapang Beach here, we have the Holiday Inn here, we have the Cushing's private property. Back here are those two condominiums. And so the area that we're looking at, that this bill deals with, is this long strip, the north-south strip. This here is another aerial view, looking straight down. So we have here the Holiday Inn. This here, you can see the lot line of the Cushing private property, the two condominiums here. And then this here is the easement that we're looking at. And over here is the Matapang Beach Park. The buses are not able to come in through here, because it's too narrow, and they are not able to turn around. So when schoolkids are brought in, they have to be brought in through the parking lot down here, and I guess they get dropped off in here. And there's an entrance over in here where then the tourists and the schoolchildren in particular can enter. I just want to say that I, I did, I did come there yesterday. Sixty-six years on Guam, this is the first time I've been to a zoo on Guam. Half of the Democrats on Guam have probably never seen a real-life donkey while it's down there. And, and along here are, are, I've, you come in the gate, on the right side is the caribou, and then the donkey, and then you have two deer, and then you have a male, I guess you call him a deer, whatever, and, and then we have the wild pig. They're all housed in here. And I must say that when I entered the zoo, the first thing that impressed me was the place was clean, and the animals looked very healthy. And it was not just animals that's in there, there was also a lot of plants that, that, you know, you don't see much of anymore. So I spent an hour and a half down there, and I think if I didn't get hungry, I probably would have stayed longer. But it is certainly a place that, that I certainly will make it a point to bring my grandkids to. Now, before I call up the people who have signed up, I just want to say that I've gotten, the committee has received a lot of written testimonies, and I think it breaks down into three groups. There are the government officials who have, you know, provided testimony in support of, basically ensuring that we maintain the integrity of where the zoo is at right now. Because although this here is the private property the Cushings own, and they, a lot of the caged animals are in here, the finihi, the birds, the eels, the monkey, but over here, the easement, the government easement, is really where your other animals are at, the, like I said, the donkey, the caribou. And at the very front here is an area that's been cleared out, where I guess they bring the schoolkids to, to, you know, give them lessons or whatever. But the, the, the three test, the, I guess the three groups of testimonies here are testimonies from government officials and the kind of work that the zoo does, also from schoolteachers, who basically have written that, you know, after a trip to the zoo, that becomes the focal point of discussion in the classrooms. And then, of course, the, the testimonies from, from the schoolchildren themselves. So those are the first ones that I read. And so there's certainly a lot of support. I was very impressed with the zoo, and, and, and I'm not biased, but we're going to go ahead and we'll work with this bill. I'm going to go ahead and call up for the first panel, three people, four people. I might like to call up Mr. Michael Borja, Director of Land Management slash Administrative Director. You're here in your capacity as Administrative Director for the Chamorro Land Trust, right? Because this is Chamorro Land Trust property that we're talking about here. So if you step forward, please. Mrs. Barbara Cushing? Okay? Yeah. Ms. Barbara Benaventi, and Mr. Manny Duñez. And, and there's several other peoples that have signed up, and I, I will certainly call you forward. Your testimonies are going to be important. I would like to start with these three here. And so I'd like to start with Mr. Mike Borja.
Good morning again, senators. I'm Mike Borja, the Director of Land Management and the Administrative Director of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. We've reviewed this bill, and I just want to start off with some technicalities that we included in the beginning part of our written testimony, and that it, the, the lot described in the bill should really be corrected to Lot 5133-1-2 in the municipality of Timuning. And I put all the other issues that have to be included in there. We also asked that there be a revisionary clause included in the bill that, should the land no longer be used for this intended purpose, it will be returned to the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. Now, the original use of this lot by the Cushing Zoo was authorized by Public Law 19-34 in 1988. During the contract period, control of the contract transferred to the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. The term of the lease expired a few years ago. However, CLTC did not have any commercial rules and regulations in place to provide a method to address a new contract. In the course of creating the CLTC commercial rules and regs, provisions were included to address unique circumstances, such as this lease, which permitted a zoo with a botanical and marine garden. The enacted commercial rules and regs, however, did not provide a clear path for such a unique lease. This bill works to address the necessities of entering into another lease for this small quarter-acre lot that serves as part of the zoo. But more than just a zoo, the custodians also provide conservation efforts for indigenous plants as well as sheltering endangered species. The creation of the biodiversity conservation easement will help in this effort of keeping what was once a natural habitat for Guam's natural species in an area where they once flourished. For the zoo to survive financially, the rental structure established in this bill would be more amenable than the conditions set forth in the CLTC commercial rules and regs. Additionally, the rent would be greater than that, that was established in Public Law 19-34. Lastly, we recommend that the current facility be assessed by pertinent government agencies such as the Department of Agriculture Divisions of Aquatic and Wildlife Resource and Forestry, and/or resources available through the University of Guam, through the EOG Marine Lab, to ensure the facility complies with acceptable education and outreach programs and/or initiatives. And if I might add, I believe they may already have been doing all those things, we're just not aware of it. The custodians of the, of the Cushing Zoo are passionate and dedicated to this facility. They have been good stewards of the land and protectors of our natural species. Passage of Bill 276 will allow them to continue in this effort.
Thank you very much, Mr. Borja. Ms. Cushing?
Good morning, Senator. Mr. Chairman, Speaker Wampat, senators, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak in behalf of our zoo. So what it is, is Senator Munia Barnes and Speaker Judy Wampat, back in 2000, I mean, March of nine, 2016, introduced Bill 276-33. Lot number 5133-1-2 is of the greatest significance to us to continue the conservation effort of the native wildlife. Since the inception of the Guam Zoological Botanical Marine Gardens in 1976, we have worked diligently to provide a unique service for the community and for the entire Marianas Islands Archipelago. We promote conservation and are stewards of indigenous and endemic species. We are the wildlife repository for the local and the federal government. Wildlife species that was once otherwise been, wildlife species that would have otherwise been euthanized because they were illegally brought into the island or needed rehabilitation have made our- rehabilitation have made our zoo their home and are considered and are extended family. For forty years, we have dedicated our life to this cause without local or federal funding or assistance for animal care. One of our greatest achievement these past few years have been the exponential growth of the endangered Mariana fruit bat community in our zoo. We are caring for seven fruit bats from the Guam National Wildlife Refuge, including the newly-retired Phanihi Mutung from DAR outreach program. In March of this year, U.S. Fish and Wildlife authorized a transfer of one juvenile fruit bat from Rota for our care. The fruit bat, fruit bat was shot from an illegal hunter. His left wing could not be saved and had to be amputated. That particular bat's going to have to be with us for the rest of its life. It won't survive out in the wild. The Phanihi, um, we participate in the annual Phanihi count each summer, an anticipated partner project with U.S. Fish and Wildlife for Habitat Restoration. We started a group of four fruit bats. We have grown now to the colony of twenty. We have one mom that gives out real nice baby pups and up to two. Never have it been heard of two, just one per year. We initiated our bird project, bringing, bringing home native Mariana bird species that was once established in our island prior to the introduction of the invasive brown cheetah snake. On exhibit now at the zoo, and Chairman will verify with you, we have the Coco, the Egigig, the Paluman Sinisa, and the Sali. Very soon, we are going to be having on exhibit the Chicharica and the Nosa. Now, the Egigig is extinct in the wild. It has not been seen in Guam for thirty years. We don't have no more Chicharica nor the Nosa. As a matter of fact, I don't even remember ever seeing Nosa growing up. Chicharica, yes, because we were brought up, if you follow the Chicharica into the jungle, you're going to get caught with the Totamona. So of course you stay away from that, right? In any case, we are anticipating the, the authorization for the Paluman Fachi and the Paluman Apaka from a breeding program in the States. Currently, we are collaborating with the San Diego Zoo for the Totot, that's the Mariana fruit dove, actually very gorgeous dove. We work closely with the Sinomai Fish and Wildlife, Pacific Bird Conservation Group, bird curators from the Houston Zoo, Cedric County Zoo in Wichita, Kansas, Disney Animal Kingdom in Florida, New Orleans Zoo, St. Louis Zoo, and our Guam Department of Agriculture. Our facility is licensed under the Government of Guam and the United States Department of Agriculture. In addition, permits from the Department of Agriculture and U.S. Fish and Wildlife and the conservation of international trade of indigenous species. We get unannounced inspection once or twice a year from USDA based out of California and our territorial vet, Dr. Tom Poole, and semi-annual inspection from, from the zoo veterinarian, Dr. Kevin Malacuti. In closing, we have dedicated our lives and have gone, I've given all our all to the preservation and conservation of wildlife, our environment, and providing an enrichment experience unlike any other available in Guam. We are the only one that's able to have out to our community native species of such, I've mentioned. It is vital to continue to educate and promote conservation, most importantly, of our fragile wildlife. We work long hours, seven days a week, and have endured tremendous hardship because of our passion for providing a safe haven for endangered species, animals that otherwise be euthanized, and sharing with our people and our people from all over the world, our love and dedication to an important part of our culture. We humbly ask for your support and support from all of these colleagues for Bill two seven six thirty-three dash thirty-three, so we can continue to provide the community and our children and the future generations a service highlighting the importance of wildlife and their impact in the world. Now, I mentioned about the hardship. We have endured tremendous hardship providing our community and our children a zoo. From a berm or a hill by our entrance, the intent of that was to block the zoo from being seen out on the road. Along the San Vitorius Road, we have our sign established there, was make sure that two ficus tree are planted in between the sign. Ficus tree, as they get mature, can cover the entire sign, including the police coban. So the intention is there. Evidently, they don't want us there. I had requested because people are complaining that it was difficult finding the zoo. So I requested from Parks and Rec if I can have a directional sign. I was granted by one director. Next administration came in. They said everything that was passed during the past administration was all illegal. And I had to take our sign down. I was threatened to be arrested, and I was ordered to pay for the park ranger to take the sign toward a dump. Well, I said, you know, I don't want to get arrested. Heck, I don't even have a parking ticket, never. All we want to do is have something for the kids. And this is what we've been doing for over forty years. There's so many things going on. I don't know why we're getting picked at. We're very quiet. We don't stir trouble. We do as we're told to do. We don't, we can't seem to go on anymore. We need your help. Just before I, um, I started talking about the birds we're bringing in, I'm happy to hear that also going to be added into the attraction is the sea hip. That's everybody's favorite as well. I have my granddaughter that says, Grandma, when I come home? Don't worry, Grandma. I'm going to be the zoo vegetarian. Okay, Grandma?[1091.08][1091.08](Laughter). We all know she meant veterinarian. So sweet. So I'm counting on the grandkids to come home and take over what Grandma and Grandpa started. Thank you. I better turn it over to Manny.
Well, I think Manny needs some cooling off time here. I'll start with, uh, Mrs. Beneventi.[1117.33][1117.33](Laughter).
I have, uh, my name is Barbara Siniklas Beneventi. I go by Bobby. Good morning, Senators. Thank you for this bill and the opportunity to testify in support of it. That's a really difficult, um, testimony to follow because it really stirs a lot of emotion. The zoo and what it has done for family time, um, for my children and my grandchildren to this day, over the past four years, has been really, really wonderful and does nothing for stirring up pride in ourselves as Chamorro people and being part of the experience that Barbara and Jimmy have worked so hard for and their parents, her parent, his parents before then. It is the right thing to do, to support this, the passage of this bill. I'm going off the text. I had intended to just read my written testimony, but I need to just speak from the heart. I am so pleased that age sixty-six, you went to the zoo yesterday. It's never too late to experience new things, especially when it's in your backyard. And, um, in my written testimony, I provided photos that I've taken of the children I've taken over the years. So these are not just last week before this hearing is to be held. It's over time. And so I just selected a few that I was able to print quickly for your review. So if you haven't gone to the zoo, look at these pictures that's attached to my testimony. Um, and then after that, go to the zoo this afternoon.
You open?
Yes. Seven days a week. Honorable Senators, I submit this letter in support of Bill number two seven six dash three-three relative to designing, designating a portion of Lot five-one-three-three dash one dash two in the municipality of Tumon, Guam, as a biodiversity conservation easement for the purpose of providing an area for the preservation of indigenous biodiversity and the continued lease of this property to James and Barbara Cushing. Known as the Cushing Zoo, the Guam Zoological Botanical and Marine Garden is a valuable and unique place in our island that historically and presently promotes and perpetuates cultural and educational opportunities for Guam's children and families about animal, marine, and plant species that are indigenous to Guam and the Pacific region. Over the past twenty years, my children and grandchildren have consistently visited the Cushing Zoo and each time delight in their adventures to see and learn about all the animals that are being cared for. Each visit is like a whole new experience, and they are always excited to walk through the zoo to discover or rediscover the Mariana's fruit bat, the caribou, deer, sharks, the eel, Maori eel, the, um, did I say manta ray? But I think I made a mistake on what kind of ray that was, but the turtles, the monitor lizard, and other species. We have many reasons to be proud of the Guam Zoo and to be thankful to James and Barbara Cushing for their hard work and dedication in keeping the only zoo in Guam open for our island's residents and off-island visitors to enjoy. In spite of hardships and great challenges they have faced and continue to face a result of tropical storms and typhoons that wreak havoc on our island, they relentlessly provide the best care possible and love for their animals and marine life. We must support them with the passing of Bill two seven six dash three-three and consider their status as a longtime locally-owned, small business operated by two individuals. It would be fitting to do all, to do all that is legislatively and fiscally possible to help them continue to provide a much-needed service in our community and to ensure that increases of rental amounts be established to no greater than five percent every three years as payment to the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. Thank you for your time and consideration of my personal testimony and for this opportunity to share these pictured moments. I kind of thought about, you know, whom I to offer a suggestion of five percent every three years after reading what was proposed in the bill. And I was thinking about the number of big businesses that get a lot of support, a lot of tax breaks. And I'm wondering, you know, why, why not? Why not make it so that the Cushing Zoo survives and thrives for many, many more generations to come? And so while the, it is important to support the leasing of the land to Barbara and James Cushing, it is also important to allow any other opportunities for true success in this very small business that is, has been operated for forty years. Um, thank you, Senators. I have two other letters that were given to me and asked if I could read it. Um, I will read it when you say I can read them. Um, I'm a retired government of Guam employee now, so I've got a lot of time to hang out and read other people's letters, uh, for those who couldn't be here this morning.
So what I would like to do is, because we do have a lot of people that did sign up to re, uh, to provide oral testimony, uh, maybe if you could just, uh, submit those testimonies?
Okay.
And, um, and, and we'll make sure that it gets put into the record.
Okay, they've submitted, thank you.
All right. Okay, Mr. Duñez.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Madam Speaker, Honorable Senators. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on, in support of the bill pending before you. Uh, I'm glad you gave me a break because I was getting excited. I was going to tell Parks and Rec to call me up and I'll take the sign to the dump so I don't have to charge Mrs. Cushing. It's really ridiculous. I've seen a lot more effort, uh, helping private companies and other stuff. But, you know, to me, this bill doesn't go far enough. Um, the word here is passion. And Senators, I want to make you aware that there's a few of us left. You got the Farmers Co-op, you got Angie Manjola, you got Bill McDonald, that have passion. You have the Cushings that have been doing this for forty years, they have passion. The thing is, we get burnt out. And if we don't get your support for these types of legislation right away, sometimes we, why do we do it? Why do we? I'm a farmer. I'm a livestock raiser. I spend three hundred dollars a week raising animals I don't even eat. So I, I feel for the Cushings. And I'm very proud of them because they have twenty, over twenty Phanihi. The government of Guam has been raising Phanihi for thirty years and all they master to do was castrate the only male. That, that one Phanihi could have produced an Einstein for the Phanihi population, a super Phanihi. But no, we have to cut his nuts off because he wants to fight. Some males want to fight. So at the end of the day, all they're doing down at the Cushing Zoo, what you're offering here, it's not enough for me. I'd rather you see, you give them five hundred dollars a month for the next twenty years and after that, it goes consolidated with their property. And it has to remain in perpetuity as a Cushing Zoo. And it cannot be owned by an off-island firm. You know, they can't sell. And I really admire them because you go to anywhere in the States, you see advertisement about zoos, please send your donation, please send your donation. I had the privilege and the honor of visiting the Cushing Zoo twice in my lifetime. And honestly, with all that development to month, that's why I couldn't find it. They don't have a sign. I love these people. The passion they have shown, the work they have done, the limited space they have, I'm sure some, someone's going to challenge them. If you say it's an ecological thing, someone's going to challenge them in court and say, well, the hotels can do it. Why are they being favored? And besides, they're violating every rule. They'll come up every rule that would make them suffer more. Like I said, I raise livestock. They do it, I do it as a passion, they do it as a passion. They're not making money. I don't see you wearing a Rolex or anything else.
It's silicone braces.
Oh, silicone braces, thank you. Hey, that's three ninety-nine. But at the, at the end of the day, I'm asking you, Senators, to really reconsider this legislation and forget about the biodiversity. I love the term, but interpretation by different companies, whoever has the money, will develop that and expand on, and expound on that. I'm sure Holiday Inn needs it as a walkway to go to the beach because they're conflicting with the canoe people on the other side, which I love, because that's, that beach was built for our people, not for them. So I'm asking that we consolidate the lots under long-term lease purchase agreement. Five hundred a month to me is very reasonable, the amount of money they're going to be spending more on feed. I'm always happy when they call me once in a while at the co-op and say, Manny, you have any leftover fish stuffed in the freezer that's freezer burn? I'm always excited to give it to them because it cuts down their costs and it continues them to survive. And, uh, in the meantime, I don't want it under Chamorro Land Trust. I'm a Chamorro. I don't trust anybody.[1727.41][1727.41](Laughter) Okay? I want it under land management to handle the lease for five, for the next twenty, thirty years, whatever. I think thirty years is good at five hundred a month to be reasonable. Is that reasonable?
It's good.
Okay, that's what I'm asking for. And that's my testimony. The other thing that really scares me here is in the legislation, is we all go through financial hardship. God bless Jimmy and Barbara, healthy, and they got healthy children and grandchildren, but at the end of the day, it says rental payments have not been paid. They're living hand-to-mouth. I'm sure as a private company, it's difficult for them to get Obamacare health insurance. So at the end of the day, if they miss a payment, if whoever's in charge says, oh, you didn't pay last month, we're going to take it back. Because their buddy at the hotel name wants to give them free lunch every day? Let's face it, if it comes to us local people, we're on the corner. If it comes to hotels, oh, give them tax break. Twenty million dollar tax break and you're talking about maybe a, at the $20 million tax break and you're talking about maybe a, at the most, a million dollar piece of property that you're gonna give them for 500 a month for the next 30 years. And this is local, this is a local entity. It's our own people. So, uh, you know, again, back to the passion. Don't burn the candle at both ends. I really love the Cushing family. I've known them many years, not personally, but I've always admired them. And I don't think they've done anything to betray that trust to the people of Guam, that whatever they do is for the benefit of the community. How many kids benefited from that? How many adults benefit? I was freaking out at how well they'd handle everything, that little space. How much more can they do with that little more land? But like I said, I appeal to you, I, I, I beg you, I beseech you to please forget this biodiversity thing. Go and just give them the property for the next 30 years at 500 a month on the condition, like everything else in Guam, we have conditional use, even though it's violated later on. You know, my biggest pet peeve is Leo Palace was supposed to provide power at a billion dollars a year on their project. So they down scaled it so they didn't have to provide power for the southern end of the island. Then they went back up to a billion and everybody forgot about the power plant. You know, those are the conditions that we forget. But I don't think the, the Cushings are like them. I don't think the Cushings would ever betray the trust of the people of Guam in what they have done. I'm really proud of them. You know, my biggest pet peeve in, in fishing and hunting and everything else in life is that our culture is slowly being destroyed. And everybody professes, oh, we have to protect our culture. The word preservation means to put something in a jar and pickle it. I like perpetuation. I hate to use the word loosely, but you know, raising 22 fini, imagine if you got a bunch of farmers in Guam to do the same. Then we have thousands of fini, then we can revisit the cultural aspect of what fini is all about, how we eat it, how it's prepared. That is the part that is being lost, just like the sea turtle, the green sea turtle. You know, let's, let's get a teddy bear turtle and hug it. But at the end of the day, I would like our culture to continue that practice that's being practiced throughout the Pacific by everyone but us. The federal government has protected all these species for over 40 years, and they have failed. The Cushing family has succeeded. They have shown the way. And like I said, if they can teach farmers how to raise cocoa, how to raise fruit bat, we have a wonderful cultural practice perpetuated. Again, I can go on all day. I, I wanted to speak on Dr. Galabi and he blamed everybody in the world for erosion. But the only main thing I just want to mention to you senators, coming from the jungles of the South, we don't have jungles anymore. The fadang is gone, the coconuts are going, everything is going. You see only grass. And my father was one of those idiots that burned the grass. Why? He told me, he said, boy, if you don't control the grass from growing, they chong chong on the bottom. They have little big, and that's where the water runs and that's where erosion occurs. So right before rainy season, we always burn the grass. So the new shoots come and the whole field is covered by not only grass, but all but everything else that grows. So the wild pigs, they propagate. You know, we don't have birds, but we have wild pigs. But no, let's kill them all. So what's gonna propagate all the wildlife, all the plants? So anyways, I can go on forever, but I, I ask that we amend this legislation. You can keep the wording of your environmental stuff, but I'd rather see as far as for the Cushing family and the, and the Cushing Zoo's continuation and perpetuity, I don't want it preserved. I don't want to see it preserved. And maybe in the legislation, tell the government they can put a sign on the front row. What the heck? Everybody violates, every business in Tumon violates the sign clause, but only them get blamed? Seriously? Duty-free sign, I think it's like 30% of their frontage. I think you're only required to have 10 under law. But the Cushings get threatened with being arrested. Uh, like I said, the passion, I applaud the Cushing family for the passion they have. And I urge you senators, whatever you hear, and you know of people in the community with a lot of passion about what they do, and that whatever they propose is not for them. Okay? The only nice guy I have is from my mother, and that's still in probate. Okay? My, my truck is 15 years old. So again, it's a passion. We love what we do and we do what we love, but at the end, I wanna, my, my philosophy in life, if it doesn't benefit the community, it has no purpose in life. And the community I speak of is our community, our people. And I'm gonna tell you a little story and maybe our culture will be looking for me later on. I got stray dogs around the co-op, but every Wednesday night, every tourist wants to pet them. Every tourist, that's why I have stray dogs. So every Wednesday night, they get fed by the tourists. They never seen a dog before. Do you know they come from Japan and Korea, China? Well, I don't know whether, you know, but they never, they want to touch the dog. Can you imagine if the Cushing Zoo were helped by us? And again, listen to what she said, she does not get assistance. So I think the assistance of giving a long-term lease purchase on that property is the perfect assistance that no one can ever complain about. So I guess I talked enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Duñez. Before we dismiss this panel here, I do, uh, do have, well, I have some questions. And I like, I have some questions to Mr. Borja. Mr. Borja, in your testimony, uh, on page two, you talked about, um, for this zoo to survive financially, the rental structure established in this bill would be more amenable than the conditions set forth in the CLTC. Let me, let me just point out a few things. When, when the Cushing's, the Cushing Zoo was initially authorized by public law 19-34, that's in 1988, it was given a 20-year lease at $1,000 a month rent for this quarter-acre lot. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah. Now, the, um, a, a couple of years after that, uh, actually in 2002, more, more than a couple of years, um, a, a similar animal shelter was authorized by public law, and it was given a 30-year lease. And basically, the purpose of that particular one that was passed by public law 26-98 in 2002 was given a 30-year lease with additional extensions of 10 years for maximum of two 10-year extensions. And the rent was a dollar per year. And on top of that, um, I believe the government helped to pay for the utilities and whatnot. Now, um, so when we take a look at the Cushing Zoo, uh, there's many similarities between the Cushing Zoo and that other animal institute, that animal shelter that was authorized in 2002. It's also, I, I believe you're a nonprofit, you're registered nonprofit now?
Oh, wait, I have, uh, the Wildlife Micronesia that was just formed last year.
Okay.
In hopes we'll be able to get some funding through, through our nonprofit organization.
Okay, so, so you have a nonprofit status?
Yes.
So I, I would just like to ask, uh, Mr. Borja, if you think Chamor Land Trust, if, because right now, what pub, what the bill proposes is to charge an annual rent of $1,000 per month, um, the same as what it was back in 1988. Can you give me your thoughts if, if the bill was to be amended so that the rent is a dollar a year?
The reason that I found it difficult to engage in contract with the Cushing Zoo under the current Chamor Land Trust rules and regulations is that the rental structure that the rules establishes for us to, to create would have made their rental pretty cost prohibitive. It would have made it quite high. But I had no discretionary authority to adjust that in any way, only legislation can. And so I, I begged, you know, for these kind, this kind of a remedy for this zoo because there was not really a good path for us to go down in the, in the only clear path we had. And so if it was, if the pleasure and the discretion of this legislature to give them a lease of a dollar per year for the term of their lease, I would not have any objections.
And, and, and there's certainly precedence for that already. Because the other organization, which is GAIN, uh, they also provide an excellent service to the community. And the purpose of that organization is very much similar to what the Cushing Zoo does. I mean, they are provided at least that benefit. I know that in my discussion with you yesterday, I asked a question, are you breaking even? Are you in the black or what? And I think you indicated that you're spending something like $8,000 a month for food and, and utilities and whatnot, and what you bring in, um, from visitors, um, you know, hardly, hardly close to that. Okay. Um, all right, so I just had to ask that question about the, you know, that $1,000 per month versus what another institution is getting at a dollar a year. Okay, does anybody else have any other questions? Senator Uggan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you everyone for your testimony. Mr. Duñez, I appreciate your perspective because not only did you present your, your comments with passion, but you also related it, relate the, your comments to how our government entices big business to establish themselves on island. And here is a wonderful facility that the Cushing family has been providing for the last 40-plus years in terms of being able to provide this unique service. And I'm very, very appreciative of the chairman looking forward and, and bringing that issue as a concern or as, as a question. And Mr. Borja responding very positive in terms of possibly modifying the rental cost. Because when we look at this and we look at what is one facility on island that we need to continue to try to perpetuate, not preserve, but to perpetuate in light of everything that you're, all the services you're providing, not only an opportunity for our kids, and by the way, my grandson has been there twice and has enjoyed every moment, uh, but the conservation efforts with regards to plants and live animals. In addition to that, the fruit bats that you continue to provide our, our visitors as well as our people the opportunity to be able to come and see and, and take a look at some of those fruit bats as well as, as the native species. So I'm very much, uh, in favor of not only supporting this, uh, if in fact the chairman decides to proceed forward with his idea, he's, he definitely has my support. The only other question I have is, aside from perhaps the lease, has our community rendered any assistance in regards to, uh, promoting our visitors to visit your facility? And I, I ask that because we tout almost 2 million visitors or 1.3, 1.4 million visitors to our island community. And right now, in the heart of our tourist district, you have a wonderful facility that many of our visitors, I would anticipate, would appreciate. So in the last, let's say, five, 10 years, it has our community, whether it be through Guam Visitors Bureau or any other entity, been able to provide additional support other than the use of this property?
Um, no. We've been members with GVB for many, many years. We've gotten nothing, nothing at all. I was able to set aside some, some, um, funding so I can be able to, to have some pamphlets made. So we were so proud of it because my son and I put it together. And it's, it's a beautiful pamphlet. Well, in any case, we started, was happy and wanted to go into the hotels and distribute them out and all this and that. Then I found later on, as I was handing them the pamphlet, that I can't do that. I have to go through tour companies and get a contract going. I think we all know where's that going to, right? We can't afford that. To, to even have them tell me to, to charge way lower than what we have provided for the residents, I couldn't do that. So the thousands of dollars I put in for the pamphlet has been disposed of, it's outdated. I wasn't able to put it in the hotel. I, uh, there was one, um, lady I spoke to at one of the major hotels said, well, I'll go ahead and take it and when the tourists ask for it, I'll give it to them. I go, okay, so where are you gonna place the pamphlet? Oh, I'm just gonna put it in my filing cabinet. I go, what the, what is that? You know, it don't make any sense. So again, I have to turn away and I don't know what to do at this point.
Well, I think that, that in this case, uh, perhaps this is gonna be the impetus that would allow our government to be able to step forward and, and provide some form of support so that you can encourage our visitors to.
I'm sorry, I always thought, you know, support local.
Yeah.
I, I am very much local. I don't know what else and how else to go about with it. But, um, we've tried on our own and we just keep ramming our head to a wall.
Well, now that it's coming from you, Ms. Cushing, and I recognize your husband's in the audience, Jimmy, certainly not only the sponsor who's the chair of tourism, but you've heard from the chairman in terms of possibly taking options so that we can provide that as a community, provide that additional support to the Cushing Zoo so that you can provide that service to our, our people. And, you know, regardless of the entrance fee that you provided, my grandson just completely disregarded it and he said both times, he said, we gotta go. Actually, the second time, he got even more excited. He wanted to go and not see the donkey, but, but to see some of the other species that you.
I'm glad you can't fit an elephant in there.
But I, let me just close with this. I really appreciate the perspective that you bring to the table. Because it's like a hidden jewel in the midst of our tourism industry, and we need to be able to share that, that jewel with the rest of our community here in Guam as well as our visitors. So I look forward to continuing this, this dialogue, this piece of legislation, whatever the chairman has offered, and then perhaps working with my colleagues and the chair of tourism to see if some resources can be directed in your direction so that you can keep the entrance fee at a nominal fee so that at least this service can continue to be provided to, to our island and to our people. So thank you very much and I wish you continued success.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Duñez.
Thank you. I just want to add on to what Senator Uggan was talking about, and I think GVB should be encouraged to develop a local section of their promotion and also encourage hotels that they have to set up a little display for local businesses, you know? I, I hate to say it, but if you're not big business, you're not part of the game. But so I'm just, I'm, you know, I, I really feel for her. I really feel for the Cushing Zoo. And whether it benefits only them, it's great. I don't, you know, but if it benefits the co-op, it benefits the farmers co-op, if they can set up a little thing so we can expose, you know, expose our wares and our products because GVB's not actually helping us. I mean, you heard it, she's a member. Thank God, I never paid the dues. Thank you.
Just, just one final comment, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Because she has experienced, uh, Cushing Zoo has experienced challenges with erecting a sign. We do have a coban which may be on, on public property, perhaps if, and I'm only bringing this up because if it's not discussed during a public hearing, then it, in most likelihood, will not be included as a consideration of the bill. But if in fact that's public property, then I would encourage Mr. Chair that we consider providing an authorization for them to erect a sign in that adjacent to the police coban so that at least that's a primary entryway for many of our school students on the buses, and it would be extremely visible. So that's just a suggestion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Menemete.
I, I just wanted to make one suggestion. I'm reminded that a couple of weeks ago during the Youth for Youth Live Conference that was held here, there was a team of middle school students from the Republic of the Marshall Islands that came with three adult chaperones. And when I met with them, I, you know, I still step into those conferences to provide support to the staff and the youth. And I asked the Marshall East children if they've ever been to a zoo. Because they were sharing their experience, they did a tour on the island, they saw a caribou, and they were like fascinated. They were like, what is that? So they were telling me these stories. So they were telling me these stories about seeing a caribou in the south and had no idea what this big cow was. And so I extended an invitation to host them to the zoo. And Barbara and James did not charge us. I think I do want to pay though, because I still feel guilty about having brought 13 people in there and not paying the fee yet. And they were so fascinated. They said the, they represented two kids from each of the Marshall Islands in that region. They were on, they weren't all from Madro, just two from Madro and two from other outer islands. And they were so, so excited, and it gave me such pleasure to experience that with them a few weeks ago. They've said they've only seen chickens, dogs. I don't know if they've seen cats, but they definitely said they've only in their lives have ever seen chickens and dogs. So the letters I also have here that was forwarded to Barbara and James Cushing was letters from Palau. They brought their, their grandson over, and then there's letters also from people from the west coast. So the, the zoo is a treasure. It's something we must keep, we must support. I love the idea of a dollar a year for 99 years. I didn't know precedent was set for other nonprofits like the, like Guam GAIN. So I think we really must support them in the same way. So you can change that part in my testimony. Don't charge them. Dollar a year for 99 years, and, and then we'll talk after that. Thank you so much.
Okay. Speaker?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just have to say that I really feel, you know, of course saddened to hear that all these years you have endured and, and you kept it all basically to yourself. You've never really brought it to the legislature, because this could have been addressed many years. I'd like to also say that I know that the chairperson of tourism has been very supportive with a lot of local activities and have actually supported it by appropriating, you know, monies as much as the monies are available. So this is definitely something that, you know, I would discuss with her, especially hearing that you've actually, you actually spent $8,000 in food and utilities and, you know, you're barely making ends meet, and, and we do nothing in terms of assisting when in fact tourists actually go there. So, you know, we always consider that portions of the monies actually then would go to support activities and events that our tourists actually, you know, attend. So most definitely, I, you know, with all these being brought to, to us, it's definitely something that, you know, we'll sit with the chairperson to make the additional amendments to, to be able to provide and, you know, protect and to continue to perpetuate what's there and what's in our culture. Because you are right, Mr. Duñez, and many of the tourists who come here come from metropolitan, you know, cities and really don't see, you know, what are in zoos. And that's exactly what zoos are about, is that, you know, animals and that are becoming extinct or are extinct elsewhere, but only survive now in, in the zoo to remind us of what was here before we even came. So I, you know, we totally support, of course, your efforts and we want. And I'm sure that this was an enlightening public hearing for many of our members. So thank you very much for all that you have endured and the burden and, and never shared with anyone.
Senator Speaker, it looks like you're itching to get the mic.
Yeah, and I'm also itching to say that when I first went to the zoo, I was in elementary school. And, and your facility has just grown tremendously over the years. And I see my childhood friend, Juanita, and, you know, the zoo also provides, as Bobby pointed out, opportunity for grade school students, both public and private school kids, to, to see what kind of animals you have there. Do you still have those arrangements with the public schools to do school tours?
Yes, we do. We do provide tours. We, we, our main, our main guided tours to our native animals that are actually in trouble in the wild, from, from the sea turtles I rescued from Canada. I explained to them how and why it's not been able to be released in the wild. So also the birds that I'm bringing in to Guam are, are also in line for the school kids, teaching them, things like that. My biggest goal really to, is to add in a booklet so they can take it back to school as their educate, extended educational studies of what is here in Guam.
Would you be willing to, I mean, if we are talking about a dollar a year for 99 years, for example, or any amount different from what's being proposed in this bill, would you be open to having some formal relationship with the Department of Education through an MOU?
Sure.
To require school tours and, and that would be the exchange for, for a reduced monthly rental, whatever that rental amount ends up being?
Yes, that, we can easily work with, with the Department of Education on this. Let me back up a little bit here. We, we do have school field trips. This is the biggest problem here, the biggest hassle-
Transportation?
Yes, the transportation. I heard now that the private busing company charges up to $10 per child. Now, if you have two children going to a field trip, that field trip to the zoo, that's $20, plus their admission to come in is $5, and then an additional $5. And then let's say, oh, let's go and get a Big Mac or whatever, Happy Meal. I don't think a parent is going to be very happy with having to fork out almost, what, $30, $40, and then, it's been really difficult for a lot of them. Our, our field trip has declined to the zoo because of that. And I did mention to a lot of the teachers that DPW is opening up their busing, it's only $3, but you have to make an arrangement with them months ahead of time, and they'll be more than happy to accommodate them. But I think what's going on is, is because of busing situation, they have to be back at a certain time to go pick the little ones up, run back and get the bigger kits. So it's not working very well. So they ended up having to, to rent buses. I heard of it, up to $365 for a field trip.
And so in your rate structure, I imagine you have a student rate?
Yes, yes, we do. We do have our, the, we have not raised our price in over 10 years. We try to keep it as minimal as possible. And, because we feel for the parents, we feel for the kids, you know, this is all for the kids. And I see there's a lot of people out there in our community that are having a, a very difficult time. So we have a very big heart, very, very big heart.
You know, as the speaker pointed out, the legislature gives annual appropriations in addition to the lease for GAIN, also an annual appropriation to GAIN to help out with the animal shelter. So I think what this hearing also opened up is parity, and what's happening for some NGOs should happen for others. So I mean, it's a really good discussion, and I want to recognize Director Borja for his willingness to try to resolve this favorably for the, for the Cushing Zoo. I think he was just unable to do so given the current statutes that prevent him from moving forward. But Director, can I just ask what the current rent is? Because you mentioned that this bill proposes a higher rent that's part of the current rent.
I think you can answer that better. Because it was one of the things where we haven't been, have you been paying for the last, when your lease was expired? I don't think so. Right. And it wasn't something we were going to shut them down for either, because it was something that we were trying to, to correct. And I just asked them to have patience. And it was when we got to this point where it was going to be still difficult, I just, my recommendation was to have legislation to, to satisfy this issue completely. And finally, but as far as the rental goes-
I just asked what the current rent is so we can have a basis to-
Yeah.
-we start negotiations.
I was assuming it was around $500 some dollars is what you were paying.
Five, 12.
Okay. I like Manny's price better, or Bobby's price even more. Yours was 500, right? But anyway, I think it leaves for a lot of work for us to figure out. But thank you for all the work that you and your family have done over the years. And this idea of when the tourists come to Guam, I don't know if people realize, but every minute of every hour of every day they're here, it's all, they're already have a package set forth. And so we gotta work with GVB to find out how do you tap those tourists that aren't here on this three-day package.
Senators, if I may add, she had mentioned that there was this problem on the property of Matapon Beach, the berm that was created by the hotel. And that's an issue that probably we, we could probably help to address as well. Because it is, it was created to, to exclude. And having spoken with the owner of that hotel, he, he just did not seem to be favorable to the idea of having a zoo in his backyard, although it was something that I thought would have been something that was, he would support. And the thing that we have on him is that really he has to use the Matapon Beach parking lot in the front as his access, entry and exit point. Otherwise, if you looked at the, the lot, lot, lot design of that hotel, he's pretty much confined and has no beach access. So the, the agreement that was created with the original creator of that hotel was that they also had to maintain Matapon Beach. That has since expired a long time ago. So that we, we began negotiating, or discussions with this company again to, to find out what elements they need to have. Because even that parking lot that many of us cannot find parking on and has spaces reserved out for buses, is not the hotel's parking.
But not only that, a lot of those parking stalls are flooded. Yeah, and so-
They're what?
They're flooded, they're, they're just-
Right in the backside, but in the front side where you can't, they, they blocked off for buses, it's not even the hotel's parking.
And they're not paying the government for any uses of those?
Well, the idea was that they're supposed to maintain Matapon Park.
Yeah, but you do have enforcement authority.
Not the land management, we'd have to go through parks and recs.
Yeah, somehow, yeah. Okay. I, you're, you're just wondering why you're going through this when other people are not going to the same. But you heard the director talk about those other areas. And I just want to quickly recognize Mr. Chairman, Senator Klitsky. I know he's fascinated by, by this mad rush of wanting to help, and that's what the legislature's always here for, right, Bob? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Senator Eto'o? Senator Blas?
Questioning Mr. Borja. And if I'm correct, I was, that property that we're talking about is about a quarter acre?
Correct. It's, if you, I don't know if you have that one-
Other than for this use, what else can it be used for?
Well, I think it was severed out from Matapon Beach Park, which it still holds in, in line the, the design use or the, the covenants that were laid down on the return of all those lands back to the government, that that'd be, it'd be maintained as a park.
Right.
And this is just one element of that park.
And so this can be, this whole discussion here fits within that, the parameters of what it was intended?
Yes, right.
So that's the best use for it, isn't it? Right now that we can, we can figure?
Right. We, that's why we have no objections to the use of this area at all. And that's, but it came, this public law was created well before the Chamorral Antras, and so it was just one of these inherited items that we had to deal with.
Okay. And just one question for, for Mrs. Cushing. You still can't fit an elephant there?
I'm sorry.
You can't fit an elephant there?
Oh, no. I'm sorry.
Just checking. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Before, before I excuse this panel, I just want to again reiterate the fact that I was certainly very impressed by the zoo when I visited yesterday. Hour and a half that I was there passed. I think it was because I was more hungry than anything else that I decided to end it. I was very much impressed. And I think it's so ironic that it is right in the backyard of, you know, the heart of the tourist district, that, that families can, can bring their children to. I mean, it's, you know, it's not a San Diego zoo, but I'll tell you, I'll be, I'm proud that we have that zoo there. So I congratulate you for that.
Thank you, and I was really, really happy. You cannot imagine how happy Jim and I are when you, you showed up in our door. Yeah, it meant a lot to us, and I'm glad that you're able to come down and see for yourself what is it we have been doing for our community. And Speaker Wampet's son and his family's been down, and they're fascinated, the children are fascinated, they'll be able to interact, feed the animals, feed the fish, feed the red-slydered turtles and the goats and stuff, just little things like that. You see the twinkle in their eyes.
And, you know, for the younger senators, many of you don't, many of you don't realize, but the Cushings have given more to this community than, than we realize, because they brought the carnival to Guam. I never saw a fair's will until they brought it in. And so has the gum bars, you know, they were part of that.
Juanita's grandma doing the ring toss.
All right, okay. So I might call up the next group of folks to, thank you very much. I have Mr. Peter Plummer. Peter Plummer, I have Ms. Laura Duñez. I have Joanne Kaufman. Okay, all right. I have Mr. Art Diorl. And Crystal Gingras?
Gingras.
Gingras, okay.
Is it, is it okay if I speak first in the class? Oh, am I sitting on the wrong part of the table?
No, no, no. Go ahead, please, sit. Does anybody have any objections, Mr.? Okay. All right, please, proceed.
Half a day, senators. My name is Crystal Gingras, and I signed up under their, under Guam Massage Travel Agency with Joanna, because we first went to the zoo last year, and I had heard about it for years and had never went. And we did a fundraiser art auction benefit. So I called Barbara, and she said that in 40 years, they hadn't had anybody from the community help. And I was really shocked because, like, our massage clients attend there, we have teachers, and actually, many of them would be here today if they weren't at school. And a lot of our clients, massage clients, are children. And so I learned about Sadie the Panther that used to be there, all the animals, probably when you guys were younger, that were rescued. And their hard work, I just wanted to cry listening to Barbara, because we volunteered last week, and I couldn't walk for days. So, and I will come back and help again. But some of the things, more importantly, that you guys haven't heard about besides repeating about the indigenous plants, and there's also historical sites there as well. I don't know if you saw them, that were there, but also some of the things that are a little negative that I noticed is the mound that's there, and they have the cocoa bird sign. I try to send tourists there too, my clients there, tourists, I try to explain, and it's hard for them to find the place. And you can see the big mound that kind of blocks it. And another thing too with the easement is that right out front is the zoo sign, and then you see the tropical things, and then, you know, Jenny the donkey's right there on the left, and the deer, but, you know, it's already hard to find them, you know. And so I know somebody asked, well, what would happen to the land? You know, and to me, I could see- You know, and to me, I could see it being overtaken by more, you know, commercialized things, which would, you know, have negative adversities. All the indigenous plants are right on the other side of the peacocks and the deers and everything, so, and then the turtles also. And so even when we were there the other day, just visiting, a new turtle came in and found its home with the other baby, you know, 30 turtles. And so, and also the birds, the indigenous birds that are there, they attract other birds to Guam, which is nice. And so also, another thing with the hotel that I noticed is a sound. And I asked Jimmy about it. It's been going on for years. You might have to ask him more about that with the hotel. But anyway, those were the three things that I wanted to mention, the sign, the mound, and the sound. I feel like those are all a part of the hotel that's in the front. And I asked him the same thing. You would think that they would want the zoo there, because they have families come in, they have children come in. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure why, you know, why they're not wanted there, so. And also, from a holistic and natural point of view, I do support the underwater world and the zoo for the turtles, the sea turtles, the endangered animals. They also have people in their community that come in with sick animals that are hurt, and even though, you know, maybe they're not veterans, but, you know, or veterinarians, they do those, you know, jobs too for the animals. And also too, in Guam, I work with people with PTSD and anxiety, trauma, you know, things like that on a spiritual level. And our zoo is one of the, you know, places where they can actually go and relax and take the kids. So it's not just for the children, you know, I think it's good too for our elders and the parents, you know, for veterans, you know, it's important that they have a place. And some of them aren't even aware to go to underwater world or the zoo, you know? So that's some of the places where I say, you need to go, you need to go relax and see the plants and the trees. And they tell you the names of the plants and the medicine that it's good for too, so. But I can go on and on about the finihi and everything, they have so much character, and Makaka, that, you know, he's getting up there in age, so. But I just want to thank you guys, and it's an honor for us to be here and speak on their behalf. And also, I was sad when we did the benefit for the zoo. We had a lot of support from the newspaper community, artists, they donated artwork, donated some artwork to the zoo. But also, we weren't supported by the Guam Visitors Bureau and by the people of Guam, which I was shocked, the local community, so we wanted to help sell tickets, and they weren't in support of that. So I was, I was really shocked by that. So, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Plummer?
Buenas half-a-day, good senators, Senator Nelson, Senator Klitsky. Thank you for the opportunity to say a few positive things about, about the zoo and to support this bill, which I hope gets amended to a dollar a month or a dollar a year, it'd even be, be better. My nephew Manet, Manny, pretty much covered, I'm really that old, he pretty much covered everything I wanted to, to say about the zoo and the, and the passion. I've been taking my children, my grandchildren, and my two great-grandsons to the zoo for, for the past 40 years. My oldest grandson now is 27, and my youngest is three. And some of you are saying, well, I went to the zoo twice, I went to the zoo, good senator, for the, for the first time. I've probably been going to the zoo three or four times a month for the past 40 years. I used to be a sixth-grade teacher, so I, you'd think I'd be able to figure out how many times I've been there, but it's, it's, it's in the, it's in the hundreds. When I ask, when I ask my, especially my younger grandchildren now, what do you want to do today? Always the same thing. Tata? Now, I own a fishing boat, I've been in the charter business for 40 years plus. I said, you want to go out on the boat today? No, Tata. Let's go to the zoo. We want to go see Auntie Barbara and Uncle Jimmy. And that's where we end up going. I probably, I probably owe Jimmy thousands of dollars. Because when my kids come up and give them a hug, what's Jimmy gonna do? I try to give him money, and, you know, Jimmy and Barbara, who'll never take it. So, so we've been there hundreds and hundreds of times, and it's my favorite place for my grandkids to go. They've learned so much about the culture, the fauna, the flora of Guam, just, just through the zoo. My 16-year-old wants to be a marine biologist. He could tell you more about the birds and the bees and the fauna than many of the people that work at agriculture. And he got that start by going to the zoo. I know Barbara can remember, as soon as she walks in, he wants food. Auntie Barbara, where's the food? I gotta feed the turtles first, then I gotta feed the goats, then I gotta feed the fish, I gotta feed the pigs. And Barbara's always there, you know, and this is a dollar a tray for a little food, and Barbara brings the bag out, and, and so it starts, you know, they, they feed all the animals, and they've, they've learned so much. Just an example of what some of the kids learn, I mean, you know, we've lost all our birds on this island, the kingfisher's gone, the cocoa bird's gone. They have a few cocos there you can go see, and if you walk 10 feet to the left when you're facing the ocean, they've got a cage with 50 brown tree snakes. So, there's, there's a lesson right there, 10 feet apart. But kids in the schools, they don't learn, adults don't learn, so. So it, it's amazing what they've, what they've done over the years. And just aside from all the fun my grandkids have had and my kids, my daughter owns Tamooning Daycare, and they make it a point several times a year to take all their kids to the zoo. And there's usually not a single one that doesn't get a favorable reaction, or a parent that says, no, I don't want my kids to go to the zoo. So that's the most popular field trip for my, my daughter's a daycare center. And I used to have a zoo at the daycare center, speaking of zoos, but Public Health shut me down about 20 years ago. I used to have snakes, iguanas, rabbits, fish, and a public health inspector came by one day, and there was a couple rabbit turds close to the fence where they're enclosed, and he shut it down. Said, oh, the kids are gonna pick up the rabbit poop and eat it. So that was the end of the Plummer Zoo, the Tamooning Daycare Zoo. A few comments on the Holiday Inn. I know they've, they've wanted that zoo out ever since it was built, first by using hundreds truckloads of dirt to pile up to make this huge burn there, which it's grass-covered now, and if we had snow on Guam, it would probably make a nice sleigh ride. But all it does is hide the entrance to the zoo. If they were, if we were to open up this quarter-acre pathway to a bid, I'm not, I'm not a legal mine, but I know the hotel would be the first one that would try to get that property. And what would they use it for? A walkway. And we're talking about big words like biodiversity, they'd probably plant a few flowers on either side of the walkway. And the most important thing is, it would probably force Jimmy and Barbara to shut down the zoo. It's gonna take that large portion of us, gonna take the whole entrance way away, and I think it would be their, their hope that that's, that's what it would do. I've talked to people from the hotel, I won't, I won't mention names, but you can, you can check the flyers that they give their, their tourists of all the activities to do on Guam. The Cushing Zoo is not on there. It's right there. I mean, you know, the families can walk out the side door, they don't need a special pathway, walk down Mataapang, and most of them don't even know the zoo is there. The hotel doesn't even advertise that. You go to the Hilton, they'll tell you you can go there, you go to the reef, but if you go to Holiday Inn, no mention of the zoo. So I also mentioned briefly, last year, there was a tourist from Asia, wrote a letter to the PDN complaining about the condition of the zoo and the poor animals and this and that. I think she was a member of PETA. You all know what PETA is, right? It's people that eat dead animals. So, but anyway, she was put up to that by the Director of Public Relations at the, at the hotel. I got this from very reliable sources that helped her write the letter. I wrote a letter in answer to that, that particular letter that she wrote. They've tried, you know, several tactics to, to get the zoo closed down. So I'll cut off now, I've, I've talked too much already, but if you can, please consider this bill and do whatever we can do to help Jimmy and Barbara.
Thank you very much, Mr. Plummer. Ms. Duñez?
Half-a-day senators, chairman. I was actually asked to read a letter that Dr. Poole wrote, but I believe you guys have it, so unless you want me to do it now, I...
No, we did, we did receive a letter of support from Dr. Poole.
Okay. Also, I do have a short personal statement on my own, on working with Barbara and Jimmy and with the zoo as, as a partner with the Department of Agriculture, Division of Aquatic and Wildlife, which I have been working there for the past five years. And they offer a valuable resource for us as far as rehabilitating our wildlife species that we can't keep with us, unfortunately, because we do house the cocoa and the sea hicks at the Department of Agriculture. They allow us to bring in, and they're gracious and they're awesome at bringing in and housing these animals that would need a little bit more time to recuperate or are just unable to go back out into the wild. And they also do a great job as another counterpart for our outreach. We try to send as many people, if they want to see a cocoa bird, if they come in, if they contact us wanting to see a cocoa bird or a sea hick, we automatically tell them, the Cushing Zoo is the best place to go to see that. It's on Guam, you don't have to fly on an airplane or get into a boat to see anything else, to see the cocoa bird. And hopefully, by the end of this year, it'll go for the same thing for the sea hick and tchirica and other birds that we did have on island. And they offer such a great resource for our schoolchildren, too. We try as much as we can on our own to get out and get the word across about our native species and how important it is to keep that on the forefront of everyone's mind, because the beginning of conservation is knowing that there's a problem. And unfortunately, I am from that generation that forgot about the birds, never saw the birds. And so having a resource as the Cushing Zoo there to teach not only my, my generation, but the, the, all the other generations about these birds offers such a great resource that, you know, I go out to schools now, and when I tell students about the cocoa bird, about these birds, they tell me they saw them already in the zoo. So it, it kind of brings back that, that lesson, and it kind of compounds it to where it becomes something that our future generations can be more active than we were in the past or we are now. So I'm, I just, I'm here in support of the bill, and hopefully, we can find something that works with them so much more than what they're, that they're getting now in terms of support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Diorl?
Let me just add one thing. Excuse me for my sunglasses, I just had cataract surgery, sure, I'm not being cool.
I have a prepared statement, but I just want to point out some of the things that, that do need your assistance with in helping with the zoo. And the first is that berm that was artificially exaggerated by the hotel to block the view that, it's just, you can tell it, it was very blatant in the, in the way it was constructed, especially it, the exit from the hotel, there's a patio, and then this stairwell to go down to access the beach. And then it was even further built out and, and to such a height that it does block the view of the, of the zoo, along with the signage and the problems that they, they had brought up about the signage. And the other thing that really has affected their business is the field trips, the, you know, with the busing situation. So lastly, on that issue with, by providing the same kind of a deal that other nonprofits have had, it really would alleviate a lot of their, their worries, their concerns as far as operational costs by having such a great deal. It was even, well, my, my earlier recommendation would have been to, to just lease, not lease the land, but to sign it over to them. For the work that they continue to do and have done in the past with little or no compensation and obstruction from the government and their neighbor as payment for the services that they have provided. One thing I did learn from Barbara and Jimmy this past week as well, is I've visited the zoo, is their, their goals and aspirations, what they would like to do in the future. And it was very encouraging, because they have a piece of property right next to the, the University of Guam Marine Lab, which will be, will be able to see the finihi in flight if their, their vision comes to fruition. Right now, they would need access by Public Works for a strip of road easement between the University of Guam and their property to be able to make that goal happen. So that's another area where we could, we could help them by having the access they need to that property. And as a bird lover myself, who did see and hear the coco and, and the cries of the, of the birds in the wild, that's something I would love to see. I've never seen finihi in flight, but when I went to Rota, saw them flying in the afternoon as I was driving around the island. But to sit there and listen to the calls of the birds down at, at the Cushing Zoo, it's something that reminded me and brought me back to, to when I was a young boy, to experience that. A lot of people do not get to, have not ever experienced that. And to bring those, those, those birds that Barbara's talking about back to Guam and have a place, a safe place for them to roam and fly freely, that is the future, what we could see if we continue to help the Cushing's with their, their goals and their, their dreams. And so let us do what we can, and I am full support of Bill 276-33, and would like to see that same kind of a deal, where I like that idea of a dollar a year for the next 99 years for the Cushing Zoo. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Diorl. Do any of the senators have any questions of this panel? None? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ma'am, I know you spoke in your... Ma'am, I know you spoke in your, I know you spoke about the department always bringing animals over to, to the Cushing Zoo for those that the department can't care for. Is there, does the department pay for any of that care that is provided by the Cushing Zoo?
We, no, they actually have been gracious enough. Most of our funding are for endangered birds. And so it's only what we can, it's all federal. We have no local support as far as our wildlife is concerned. So everything that we can't take care of within what's covered by our department, we ask them if they can. And so it's up, it's, they've been gracious enough to just take over the whole care.
So they took, they took over the care of the, of the animals and with no compensation from the government? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator. Okay, there's nobody, no other questions from this panel here, dismissed. Thank you. The last panel would be Ms. Juanita Blas. You signed up for give oral testimony. And Ms. Suzanne Medina? Senator, did you want to make some remarks?
Thanks for the question.
Well, I, I, I will always welcome his, oh, I'm sorry. And Senator Ted Nelson also, you did sign up. So, no, you can go ahead, step up to the, but we'll, 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 we'll start with Ms. Blas.
Okay. Is this on? Okay. Ah, let you get in there. Okay, Hafadae. I'm here, of course, in support of the awareness of more acknowledgement and more support going to the Cushing Zoo. I think that this, this, this law has brought attention to something that I have, I guess my family, we have known, but we've not really done anything about. My name is Juanita Blas. I am mother of six children and the director of Island Girl Power. That's the capacity most people know me. I'm also Rory's classmate. But, but my purpose here today is really just to say, as a family member of the Cushings, as a granddaughter of Marjorie and Frank Cushing, I can honestly say that the Cushing motto, the Cushing seal, their coat of arms, researching it with my daughter recently for school, and it's, it's valor and divine aid is the meaning of the Cushing coat of arms. That's the motto of the Cushing family. And it really just, it affected me greatly when I read that because I always wondered why it had to be so different. But the Cushing family stands for more. And if you're looking for a family to entrust this property to, if you're looking for a family that is going to hold true to the intent of, of what they're doing with the zoo, this is the family that is going to honor the agreements that, that is made to keep the zoo in perpetuity and to pass it along to the rest of the family. In researching about the Cushing family myself, we have a long history of giving and helping and fighting for just causes. And living on Guam, kind of separated from the rest of the Cushing heir, you know, the rest of the Cushing families, it was only by doing this research with my daughter recently that, that I found out what a true heritage that I have in, in being a Cushing. And my grandmother had passed that along to me. And I totally feel that everything that I am and, and the person that I am and who, what I stand for comes from so many teachings from my grandmother and taking those walks through the zoo. And as a child growing up and, and being a part of something bigger than myself, being a part of, of the history of the Ferris wheels and the history of the grand opening of the townhouse shopping center and grandma doing the sway pole act, I always thought I was born in the wrong generation. The zoo and, and the work that I do in the community helps me to connect and make me feel like I am doing my grandparents' justice. So let me just start this next half by saying, the Cushing family has endured. In living in Tumon for 18 years of my life, we have been flooded out by, by sewer water. Every time Tumon floods, the zoo floods. But we have also fought against the culvert because we want to preserve the Tumon Bay. We fight for what is right. And we have endured the construction of the Holiday Resort with buckets of concrete, rebars, hammers, everything falling on us on our, on our side of the property because the powers that be at the time allowed them to build right on the property line. Now, normally I focus on the positive and bringing light to all the wonderful things on the island, but so many injustices have happened to our family in Tumon. We have been rich in land, what I was told growing up, but poor in pocket. And it wasn't enough to know that we were doing the right thing sometimes because it hurts so much knowing that people were encroaching in on the property line, not allowing us an easement. And until now, when the hotel has clients or customers that drink, their bottles go over by, overboard and come onto our property. When somebody from the pool lets go of their floating device, it comes into the property. And I'm sure Uncle Jimmy has to deal with items that fall into where the, the carabao cage is and worried that the carabao might eat something and, and hurt it. You know, so there are so many things that we have had to endure. The beachside entrance, we can't even use that because how many regulations have, have come in and just stopped them in some way. Uncle Jimmy has always been a one-man show. Him and his family have taken this on and promoted themselves in very small ways on their own because they have never had the support of the community. Trying to pass flyers out to groups as a child, as a young adult, trying to help them has, has always been met with resistance. Because once we give over the power to somebody else to help us, a lot of the times we ended up getting hurt. So, you know, I just want to say that I hope that this hearing is a chance to make right on so many things that have gone wrong for our family and for the zoo. I remember the zoo being a lot larger, but the easements have all been built up on and there's no more easements and there's no more access besides what the small entrance ways that you see. The entrance way, the original beginning entrance way that is on Frank H. Cushing Way, we had to build mound, mound over the parking lot area because of the sewer water. We've had so much of that property cut into by the road that was built to get to the condominiums. And with all the struggle and adversity, they persevere. And I just want to say, you know, it's not easy to keep a group and an organization going. Mine is reaching 15 years, the work that I do. Uncle Jimmy and Auntie Bobby have been at this for 40 years. I can only hope that I can keep up the momentum to have our organization last as long as the zoo has. And so I hope that you would help us to support them better and find ways, creative ways, to give them what they need to make their operation more successful for the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Medina?
Can you hear me? Yeah. Do I need to be closer? All right. Hi, Buenas dias, Hafadae. Thanks for having me. I'm Suzanne Medina. I've been on Guam for 19 years and I came out here specifically to work with the cocoa bird. I work with Guam Department of Agriculture, but I'm here today as, as a private citizen. I've heard a lot of great things today and I feel I don't need to read anything that I've written. It's very encouraging to hear me, to hear everyone support the zoo and to support our wildlife. When I first started on Guam, 19 years ago, I, I remember one year, I think it was like 99, we decided to put the cocoa bird in the Liberation Day Parade. And so I was there on the back of the truck, holding the bird, and people were just, people didn't know what it was. I mean, the, 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 the crowds are like, what's that? What, what are you doing with that? What, what is that? And I would, I told them it was the cocoa bird and people were saying, I've never seen one before. And that's what I was getting, when I first started working here, that's what it was all about. No one had seen the cocoa bird. Now, my colleague Laura was just up here talking about how school kids are, are telling us now they're seeing the cocoa bird because of Cushing Zoo. There's, there's a lot more that needs to go on in terms of, of outreach for our birds. I don't suppose anyone, any of you guys could tell me the, the, what's happening with the mariana crow right now with our aga? Does anyone know? The aga, it's this big, beautiful black bird that we have, and it's actually went extinct three years ago. There was no public outcry. There was nobody, it didn't even make the news. At our office, we did receive some phone calls, but they were like from New Zealand radio or other places like that. But no one on Guam just batted an eye that we lost our crow. The eggigee, I've heard that brought up a couple of times today. A beautiful bird, but I don't know how many here can say what it looks like. What color is it? Does anyone, does anyone know what the-
Black.
Black and?
Red.
Red. It's a black and red bird, about this big with a little curved beak. It drinks nectar. It's, we just have such amazing birds here, but nobody's talking about them. Laura's generation, my colleague that was just up here, it's, if you're, I'm turning 50 this year, and depending on where you lived on the island, for those of my generation, whether, it's whether or not you remember the birds. Anything that comes after me, anybody that comes after me, they're not going to have the birds or the bats in their mind at all. So having Cushing Zoo, seeing their role as a zoo change, and the roles of zoos are changing also on the mainland as well, too. They're not just putting an animal in a cage to look at. They're actually moving forward towards conservation. And Cushing Zoo, with the way they're beefing up their, their birds and their bats, especially their bat colony, it's, it's just, it's, it would be a shame. It would be a, it would be the wrong thing to do to let the zoo go. I have also been hearing about the funding that, that's been brought in, how much they're going to be charged, I think a thousand dollars a month. I think that that's outrageous. If you look at endangered species recovery programs all over the nation, like Hawaii, if they, if they, they, they receive federal funds, you know, $100,000 from the Endangered Species Act to recover their alala, which is their Hawaiian crow, they also have to put in $100,000. So their state supports the recovery of their birds, of their native wildlife. On Guam, we don't have that. There, there is no support from the territory in recovering of our endangered species. So this is a way for us to step up to the plate and do something really positive to help our endangered species. So I, I, I'm thrilled to hear all these propositions that are coming out for the, maybe a dollar a year type of thing, if that's possible, way to go Guam. I think that that's phenomenal. If we also lose the zoo, we brought up what happens, you were mentioning, asked if the, the Cushings get reimbursed at all for any of the, the wildlife that we called them up to and asked them, we've got a, we've got a tropic bird here, we've got a delili with a broken leg. Our veterinarians do a wonderful job healing these animals, but they need a place to recover. And unfortunately, we can't take them in agriculture because we've got the cocoa and the sea hick there as, as well. So, so without Cushing Zoo, these migrants, these, these seabirds, it gives them a place to heal and to rest before they can go back out into the wild again. I think that's pretty much about it, what I, I wanted to cover. If you haven't been to the zoo, you should go. Bring your grandkids, bring your neighbors, and yeah, let's, let's save the zoo.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Vice Speaker Nelson?
Notwithstanding, notwithstanding any provision of law, the lease shall be $1. Mr. Chairman, senators, 20 years ago, Speakers next to you, Dr. King and myself, signed a lease with James W. Cushing for the lease down in Tumon. I finally, huh, huh, no, no water. And you can see the benefit of the action that we took 20 years ago. And today, I am proud that we're part of this movement. And there's several things that I'd like to bring to your attention. One is, one is the lease. At the time, it was $1,000 a month. I believe that talking to everybody, I believe that we should drop it down to at least a dollar. There are other issues. I would like to bring to the attention of this, Mr. Chairman, this committee, to restore the area that was originally leased by the senators back then in 1988, 1988. Perhaps you can have some research down on the, what happened to the original lease. The mention of Mangila landlock, there's a law that again, Gordon Meo and I, as that, if you're landlocked by the government, you shall be granted easement access to your property. I am very special. I'm very proud of Barbara and the Cushing family. I think that they played a major role in Guam. And I believe that by giving them all the available, some old land property, land trust property down in Tumon, for them to expand the zoo, I think they should be given that opportunity. It should be given that privilege so that Tumon can be known also as a place for not only the tourists, but should be a place for our children, as a place whereby it's recognized and not hidden by the hotel. and not hidden by the hotel. It is very important, and I ask you, Senators, to please provide all the legislation provision necessary for the expansion of the zoo. The rental shall be reduced, and that perhaps the governing agency can provide additional assistance in the development or expansion of the Cushing Zoo. I applaud the family, and again, on behalf of Speakers on the House and Senator Durkin, who passed away, we saw this 20 years ago, and we're still looking at it for another 100 years. And therefore, I am suggesting that perhaps we reduce the lease to $1, and allow the people Guam, the children of Guam, to benefit with such a wonderful effort and dedication and passion by the Cushing family. Mr. Chairman, I want to also thank the sponsor of the bill, Senator Barnes. It's, it's timely, and I believe that we should give it a complete support, every support that we can, and I hope that for any markup, that the committee should be with the family, with Barbara, and see what else can be added or can be developed in order to make this zoo a spot for Guam, for anybody coming off island, for our children to be proud of because they've been longing north, not been mentioned. We want our schoolchildren, perhaps all of them, elementary school, be able to participate, to see the zoo while they're in school. Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you for allowing me this opportunity, and I thank you of the Senators. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You've already spoken for the younger Senators, obviating the necessity for my doing that this morning. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I, I would submit that the policy advanced by this bill is salutary, so salutary that in the absence of my sarcasm app on my iPad, I'm not even going to comment on Section 3 of the bill. But to just once again say that the policy of the bill is salutary, admitting, admitting my own, admitting my own self-interest this morning, Mr. Chairman, because I've been, I've gone through the zoo, unlike some of the members this morning, I've gone through the zoo with a couple of generations of children. We're working on the great-granddaughter level right now, and I think it would be in my self-interest if we could stick around for one more generation. So I see this bill as, although I am self-interested, I see it as salutary. Going beyond the policy advanced by the bill, I'd also like to speak about-
Excuse me, can you explain more salutary?
Helpful, good, beneficial.
Okay.
Good, right? Malik, you know?
Okay, got it.
Of course, no, I'd, I'd also like to go beyond the policy of the bill and just talk about Jimmy and Bobby Cushing. They're, they're wonderful people. Those generations of children loved them, and I think the reason that they did is because they knew that Jimmy and Bobby loved them. So they're, they're fine people, and certainly if anybody would be deserving of a break, I think perhaps it would be Jimmy and Bobby Cushing. So for those reasons, I can support this bill, Mr. Chairman, and I could also make a commitment to this august body, if it did, it does enact this bill into law, and that is that if that happens, I will work with Jimmy and Bobby to try to procure an elephant for the zoo- -to keep the donkey company. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
I'm glad when you bring the humorous side of Senator Klitsky to the public hearing room. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to say one more thing. I, I think, I'd like to think we all agree that we want our birds back, right? We want our birds, our, our bats, back flying out in the wild again and no longer in cages. We've come a long way in 20 years in snake control. Imagine where we're gonna be in 20 years from now. The first step to recovery, though, is having our children, our, having the public want recovery. They want to see their birds back in the wild again. That's where the Cushing Zoo's role comes in. They are the platform, they're the base of the pyramid for recovery right now and getting our birds back out in the wild, keeping the public's support, keeping them in the public's presence in the public's mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Senators, any?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Probably not for the, for the panel, it's just that, you know, I was just, when we were discussing earlier on, on the property, and I believe it was Land Management that said that there was a, an agreement way back when, that the hotel would take care of the Matopin Beach Park in, in exchange for use of the, the property there for parking. And that has since expired and no longer in effect. So, Mrs. Cushing, I'm not sure, was it the hotel that built that burn that I keep hearing about? It was? And maybe, Mr. Chairman, something that we can also look into, including in this bill, is probably requiring the hotel to remove that burn.
I, I, that's a good point that you make, Senator, and I think it's really time to send a request to the public auditor, to really audit who all is involved in here.
Yes.
Because, for example, you know, we've got, we've got, the property line of this hotel is right up, the, the hotel is built right up to the property line.
Right.
But then that hill that was put in here is really on government land. You've got this bull cart trail here, you know, the, somebody's gotta take a look at what's going on. Then in here, actually, there, we have another map that shows that there are burials underneath, and they were just, they, it was left in place. Under here is kind of like a leaching field, but there were some, actually, some remains that's actually left in place there that was supposed to be eventually exhumed and consolidated in another burial site. So I think this, it's, it's about time that we really need to take a close look at the Matopin Beach area. It's utilized quite heavily by, by the public. But also, what's important is the zoo in here and the service that it provides to the community, and, and, and we've got to take a look at that closely.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I really appreciate that, and not only the, the service that the zoo provides to the community, but also to the wildlife that is there in trying to help bring back what we've, what we hope we don't lose and have extinct any, any longer. And that being that this is the only zoo on the island, I think it's in the best interest of not only this government in helping the, the Cushing family, but also the people of Guam in helping that the zoo actually is able to go on for generations to come. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Blas, did you have any final comments? Senator Ogden?
Okay, fine. With that, then, there being no further questions, thank you very much for taking the time. I want to thank very much the Cushings for the work that you've done. I will again say, without any reservations, I am very proud of the zoo that you have there. And there's a, going into there is a lot more than just looking at animals. I mean, how you have set it up with, you know, the, some of the local vegetation that we have. Wow, you could spend hours in there just, you know, kind of like, "Oh, I remember that when I was a little boy." So I, I really want to thank you for the work that you've done, and we have to preserve it. Okay? So with that, there being no further questions, we'll consider Bill 276-33 as having been duly heard, and we will now adjourn this public hearing. Thank you.